The City of Boston Vol. 9 Board of Appeal Hearing for October 6th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and the Executive Order of Governor Baker suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connection to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comments on the time of commenting will be limited by the chair, as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, first click the participant information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand. You will hear two beeps when taken off mute, then it is your turn to comment. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Before we get started, let me just get a roll call of Board members. Mr. Fortune.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Here.
Mr. Rogirio.
Here, madam.
Mr. Kandell. Mr. DeVoe.
Here.
Madam Ambassador, is Mr. Kandell on?
I do not see Mr. Kandell.
Okay. Okay. Jeff Hampton from the BPDAs, are you on too?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Ms. Ambassador, please let me know when Mr. Kandell is on. So the first few cases are in for an extension and then the G-Cod is an administrative function. So let us go ahead with those. And then before we start the hearings, I will have to make a comment about a five-member board. Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, the first of the businesses, do you accept the June 23rd and June 30th meeting? I think we need a full Board to accept those meetings and that's my mistake.
So let's hold off on that until Mr. Kandell is on.
Okay. You just need a quorum like you would for any other vote.
Okay, so then that means we can go ahead because we...
Okay. I'll make a motion. The approval of the hearing minutes of June 23rd, 2020, and June 30th, 2020. Need a motion.
A motion to approve those minutes.
Please so. Who is that?
Joe Rogier, a motion approved.
Joe, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first two cases for extension, calling BOA 849-678-260 to 260A Amory Street. There's a companion case, BOA 849-674-266 to 266A Amory Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney John Pulginie, 10 Forbes Road, Branch, Massachusetts. So we are here this morning to request an extension to the written decisions for 260 to 260A Amory Street and 266 to 266A Amory Street. These decisions are set to expire at the end of this month, I think on September 30th. We've been actively engaged in obtaining all approvals. We had a Boston Water and Sewer...
May I just, may I ask just, who was the applicant on this?
Bob Alessandro.
Okay. And briefly, what was the project? Is that the project down by Green Street?
Yeah, so it's a new five-unit building, Madam Chair, and then renovating an existing single film.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it wasn't...
Sure.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
A motion to extend for a year from the date of termination. Second, Joe Rogier.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 767-363-238 Webster Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Matt Eckel of Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. I'm here this morning on behalf of Palm Notum, seeking an extension for the approved project at 238 Webster Street. By what every brief fact, the project was approved by the Board back in July of 2018 and entered into the public record in August, late August of 2018. Immediately thereafter, in a butter, did appeal the decision to Superior Court and this matter has been in litigation for the last two years. In early September, a stipulation of dismissal was entered into the record, ending that litigation. Therefore, we're seeking this morning an opportunity to move forward with the project and respectfully request a two-year extension to protect the rights of these permits.
May I have a motion for a two-year extension?
So move. Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case for extension, calling BOA 810-882-FORTY-HARDING-RODE. Name and address for the record, please. Is Harding Road on?
I mean, Alex is on. Alex, you're on muted.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, my name is Alexander Burke, 40 Harding Road. I am the licensed builder and owner of 40 Harding Road. I have received approvals from this Board. Entered into the decision on October 30th, 2018 and I am requesting a five-year extension because I have long-term leases with the residents in the building, which would affect my ability to carry out activities related to construction and permitting of the project.
Mr. Burke, just, you know, a point of clarification. This Board is disinclined to give long-term extensions because the goal is to make sure that the construction occurs in a timely fashion and that it's not considered a pocket approval to be exercised any time in the future. So at this moment in time, we will only approve a one-year extension since there is no extenuating circumstance like a court case. So you need to decide and we are not really... We do not give many extensions on a particular address. So we will consider a one-year extension and, you know, just keep in mind what I've just said about the number of extensions that we do approve. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a one-year extension from date of termination.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Mr. Burke, for the record, is it Harding Road or Harding?
It's with a G, Harding.
It's with a G. Okay, that's what we have on the paperwork. Okay, thank you. Calling next three cases for extension, calling BZC 307-45. There's two companion cases, BZC 307-46 and BZC 307-47, 587 to 587B Ashmont Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Doug Stefanoff, 423 West Broadway. Madam Chair, members of the Board, I'm the architect for this nine-unit, two-building development on Ashmont Street. I have come to you to request a one-year extension. We're very close to submit, working with the Fire Department and Water and Sewer. We've had to rearrange the buildings on the site. When I picked it up beginning of the year, we've gotten slowed down, but we're very close to submission and would request a one-year extension.
So Mr. Stefanoff, has anything changed in the plans that would trigger more change in the violations?
Madam Chair, no, not at all.
Okay. So may I have a motion, please, for a one-year extension?
Motion to extend for one year from date of termination. Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Calling a next case to G-Cod, calling BOA 109-0699-126 Marlboro Street. This is a full-gut remodel, interior, exterior work, evicted egress and other staging. No change in occupancy. Violations Article 32, Section 32-4, this is a G-Cod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Coltsia, Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. As was written to the record, this is a G-Cod-only appeal. I am representing the property owner, Kobe Kemphill, of Pegasus Management. We have submitted to the Board.
Hold on, Mr. Hanley.
Yes, ma'am.
Christian, are you on today?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning. Members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. We have both the BWSC approval and note farm letters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, we also have the letter.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the... Sorry.
Sorry. So I... Before we get started, Mr. Kandell is present.
Thank you.
So we have a six-member board. Mr. Rogirio, welcome back. I neglected to state that earlier on. Yes, and let us proceed with the hearings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for the 9:30 cases only? Please give me the address.
37 Monmouth.
For the record, calling BOA 961-465-37-MONLUTSTREET. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Richard Lins on behalf of the petitioner, 245 Sun Street, East Boston. Madam Chair, requesting a brief deferral on this matter. We've been in consult with the Ops and Neighborhood Services. We have made some updates to this project and we'd like to take it back out to the Director Butters, who we've worked very closely with on this project.
Okay. And is there going to be a change from a... I know the application is for a change from a two to four. Does that still stand?
Yes, Madam Chair. That remains the same. It's limited to design changes only.
Okay, so does that in fact preclude you from going ahead with the hearing if it's external? If it's just design?
We would prefer, based upon our anticipated position of the Mayor's Ops and Neighborhood Services.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, we have fully booked for October, November. The earliest we can get is December 8th and that's squeezing that in.
Okay.
December 8th.
At 1 o'clock?
At 1 o'clock, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Any deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
30-36 Battery Mark Street.
For the record. Calling BOA 103-8178, 30 to 36 Battery Mod Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Drago with an address of 11 Beacon Street from Drago and Toscano. On behalf of the petitioner, Saunder, this is a matter that is an executive sweep, changing the use and on advice of Inspection Services Department. They are waiting on some guidelines and a memo from the Law Department, so are seeking a deferral.
When do you expect to have the guidelines out? Any anticipated date?
Madam Chair, we were told, it should have already been out, but we had another one that deferred till November and we were told that shouldn't be enough time. So I think a December date, if possible, would be more than enough time.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date?
The last case took the December, went to January 12th.
January 12th at 1 o'clock?
At 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Anything your wild child does, Mr. Cruisers 365.
Are there any raised hands?
Mr. Clark, there are no raised hands and I'm looking at my nose just... I don't see any of my nose moving. It's sour.
Okay, Madam Chair, call the first case. You call the first case for 9:30, calling BOA 106-5068, 81 Chelsea Street. This is a change of use from eight residential parking spots for sale of motor vehicles. Violation to Article 53, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Ambassador, do you see Mr. Cristallo on the... As a participant?
I do not. I don't see raised hands of anyone speaking on this case.
Okay, so let's hold this for a little while because I think there is also BPDA recommendation that's in the file. So we should hold it maybe for half an hour or so. Then let's go ahead with the next project.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 105-5346, 239 to 245 Causeway Street. This is the removal of the existing proviso of Item 1 Takeout granted to the petitioner only to an existing cafe and change to new owner. Violation to Article 46, Section 9, the use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christine Leoni and the address is 239-245 Causeway Street. I'm the owner of the Bean and Leaf Cafe and I wanted to remove the existing proviso and put my name on it to an existing cafe in that area.
What is the name again of the restaurant, of the cafe?
The Bean and Leaf Cafe.
Bean and Leaf.
Yes.
And you've had experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
Yes, I have an existing cafe already over in the Financial District that I've run for 18 years.
Okay.
I have letters in the neighborhood from the Neighborhood Services.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The drawings are ready.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Chair, members of the Board, my name is John Romano from the Mayor's Ops and Neighborhood Services. The applicant here has gone through a community process that has led to the community support as well as letters of support from some of the associations in the area. And at this time, we'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on this project?
No raised hands, ma'am.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve for this petitioner only with the usual takeout match.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 108-6604, 266 Newbury Street. This is a change of occupancy from one restaurant to two restaurants, including takeout service for first-floor restaurant. Violations Article 8, Section 7, the use is conditional. Restaurant with takeout, new item 36A. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Charles Kandell is present.
Thank you. Is the applicant here for Newbury Street?
Madam Chair, I see no raised hands. I do not see Wu Shanglao on...
Okay. Let's move to Charles Street.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 105-8872, 71 Charles Street. This is the change of occupancy from restaurant to three apartments and offices to restaurant, cafe, boutique with retail, bookstore on second floor, reading room, maybe from third and fourth, the fifth floors for offices. Install a new elevator. Violation to Article 8, Section 3. Test your usage to a restaurant, retail, cafe, office, Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use, and Article 32, Section 4, super app availability. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, property owner, Melissa Fetter, who was on with us this morning. The project architect is Monica Polly, who I believe is also with us. The... May proceed. The matter is a very interesting, complete renovation of this building at 71 Charles Street, which, for the Board's background, housed for many, many years the famous restaurant known as The Hungry Eye on the lower level of the building. And that restaurant closed after many, many years in business. The Ms. Fetter and her family bought the property with the idea in mind to convert this structure to house a bookstore and cafe. The Beacon Hill neighborhood has for many, many years been desirous of businesses such as this coming onto Charles Street, such as a bookstore, an independently owned operation. At the same time, of course, we were dealing with COVID issues, which led to the closure of approximately 20 businesses in the Charles Street Business District. So I think it's even more to the place today that the neighborhood is very, very anxious and desirous of seeing Ms. Fetter's project go forward. The, as indicated in the call of the case, it's primarily for the bookstore function, some related office space and of course the cafe, which would occupy much of the area that the former restaurant did. The building will be completely renovated. We have already had very positive feedback from the Beacon Hill Architectural Commission with regard to the change, you know, to the fix-up, if you will. We had an extremely positive meeting with the Beacon Hill Civic Association. We were unanimously voted non-opposition at our meeting with them. We have much great deal of support in the neighborhood. We've...
Mr. Colty, please. I may have missed it. It talks about three apartments. Will that, those apartments still be maintained or not?
No, they won't, Madam Chair. The building for many, many years was completely commercial and these three very small, we believe today insufficiently sized units were built out sometime in the '70s, we think, and they were vacant when Ms. Fetter bought the building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, may I just interrupt for a moment? There's also a groundwater matter.
Oh, yes. Ms. Semenelli, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both the BWSC...
and we have both the BWSC and No Harm letters.
Thank you.
Madam Chief, Secretary, we also have the letter.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pumantel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. As the applicant stated, this proposal was supported by the Beacon Hill Civic Association and received no questions or concerns from the community. At this time, we would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Counselor Kenzie Bach would like to go on record that she's in support of the application. The Beacon Hill Civic Association, as stated before, is in non-opposition of the project. She supports this stance. And as we have witnessed the closing of a number of small businesses due to COVID-19 crisis, the opening of a small neighborhood bookstore and cafe will be a very welcome addition to Charles Street. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, please don't be shy. Please put your own name on the record.
Oh, my name is Lauren Brody. I'm the chief of staff for City Councilor Kenzie Bach.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Boston City Council and East West Abbey, Georgia's office, would like to go on record in support. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ambassador, any other hands?
Yes, I have one raised hand, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Call it. You're on mute.
My name's Craig Nelson. I live at 75 Charles Street, and I'd like to voice my support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review for signage.
Is this subject to Beacon Hill?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair, I don't think we have the authority over that. Well, we could, but if Beacon Hill is going to review it, we don't need to review it.
Okay, then I'll just make a straight motion to approve.
Second is the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 105-1292, 620 Newbury Street. The applicant seeks to continue the use premises as a fee-paid public parking lot, 22 vehicles, which expired on August 31st, 2020. Violations, Article 6, Section 4, change in the previous decision of the Zone Board of Appeal. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Attorney David Gottlieb, 309 Washington Street in Brighton.
David, please tell us what's being proposed.
What's being proposed, Madam Chair, is simply an extension of the current use of premises from the prior Board of Appeal decision three years ago. I submitted a letter last month to the Board of Appeal, which you may have reviewed, showed the extensive plantings and screenings at 620 Newbury Street. With multiple plantings there shielding the lot, both on Brookline Avenue and also on Newbury Street. This work was recently done in the spring. We do this work every year annually to make sure that the plantings maintain in good condition per the BPDA requirement, and also to ensure that the parking lot remains adequately screened. The parking lot is owned by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and we are the tenant there. And we're looking forward to be able to extend the use for another three years to October 31, 2020. 2023.
2023, okay. Yes, and Google Maps does show that you have... and these, the number, the 22 is consistent?
Correct. So that does not change, Madam Chair. That's what has been approved by both the Boston Transportation Department and also, of course, by the Inspectional Services Department. And that's what we're asking for this time around as well.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
It's just a clock. We're fine.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, Secretary here. I do have Bob D'Amico, who wants to put his name on the record here, that he, 620 Newbury Street is a renewal, so it's hard to criticize. However, he does believe that space number 21 should be removed to improve overall maneuverability.
Is... Thank you, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shanice Pumantel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We receive no questions or concerns from the community, and our office also does not have any concerns with this request. At this time, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Okay, given that information from Mr. D'Amico, may I have a motion, please?
I want my motion approved.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I would encourage continued screening and buffering.
Yeah, but yeah. Yeah, BPDA design reviews for the screening and buffering.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it's Jeff Hampton. Was that for three years?
For three years. I'm sorry, that's three years.
That's October 31, 2023? That's...
I'm sorry, I'm just losing my mind here. Do we usually extend these to three years or two years?
Sometimes both.
Sometimes both, yeah, Madam Chair. We're fine with three years at this location.
Yep, okay, good. Okay, for so, for the... let's see, okay? Okay, yes, so for three years, the motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 106-6920, 532 to 534 East Third Street. This is the constructed rear, fourth-floor addition with roof tech, close six off-street parking, existing curb cut and rear yard access driveway, an existing three-family dwelling on 2,542 square feet, lot to be combined with the existing three-family dwelling at 534 East Third Street on 1,672 square feet, under one newly created lot to be 4,214 square feet, to be known as 532, 534 East Third. Violations, Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 8, the foyer ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the front yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranci. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent, and I'm joined by my client, Mark Little, who would be the buyer of the property and the developer. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to take two semi-attached... they're connected to each other. Semi-attached three-family dwellings on two separate lots, combine the lots and create one six-unit condominium building and to renovate and extend that building. One change from the summary of the project that was read into the record, there would be five off-street parking spaces now being created in the rear, and six, there is an existing curb cut off of East Third Street, which is providing access to the left side of the building as viewed from the street. And very basically, what is there now are smaller units, six units with approximately 11 bedrooms and no parking. The proposal will extend the building by erecting a rear addition and also a fourth-story addition that would be set back 12 feet from both the front and the back. And the resulting building would have also six units with 12 bedrooms rather than 11, and five deeded off-street parking spaces. With that, I'll pause and take any questions that members may have.
Yes, can you give us the unit breakdown and the number of... the number of bedrooms and the square footage, please?
Certainly. So six units are all two-bedroom units, and the square footages of the units would be 1,030, 1,037, 1446, 1298. And then the penthouse units with the additional fourth-floor area, one would be 2,104 square feet, and the other one would be 2023.
So they range in size from 1030 to 2104. Is there any residence, any use of the basement?
Going to the... sorry, going to the plans, the basement would be... sorry, living space for units 1 and 2. Specifically, that area, which is not being extended to the back, would contain kitchen and living room areas for both units 1 and unit 2.
Kitchen and living room?
Yes.
Okay, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height in there?
Floor-to-ceiling height... I may have to ask my client, Mark Little, to assist with this. I know that it meets code. It's the existing ceiling height of the existing building with these already dwelling units. Mark, do you have that?
Yeah, I believe it's 8'2" finished in the basement ceiling heights.
Thank you.
And are the utilities separate in the basement or in the units?
Yes, separate utilities.
Okay. And will, I'm looking at Google Maps here. Will there be exterior walk to the building and the frontage of the building?
Yes, and I don't know, you can take this, but yes, the building's exterior will also be completely renovated.
Is there roof tech proposed on this?
So on the fourth floor, the fourth-floor level is set back in the front and back. So there are, in the front, there is 14 feet of front balcony space. It's not on the roof. It's on the roof of the third-floor level. So there's nothing on the roof of the fourth floor. But in the front, there are front decks, and in the rear, there are rear decks for those top units, 5 and 6.
Okay. Olick, can you please show us the parking? In the meantime, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are okay. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Maranci, you said that there were going to be five parking spots instead of six. The plans show six. Which one is going to be eliminated?
Well, so the parking space, as what's being shown on the screen, and I did submit revised plans. Granted, I did submit them yesterday. Parking spot number one, which is at the end of the driveway, that is eliminated. That would allow for continuous driveway there. There's another property to the rear of this. Then in the future, they could apply for use of premises permit, and they would be granted an easement. Again, it's not part of this, but in the future, there would be an ability to add off-street parking by eliminating that parking spot number one.
And looking at the plans, the parking plans here, the neighbor to the right, do they have parking in the rear, too?
I don't know. Mark, neighbor to the right, do they have parking in the rear?
At present moment, they do not.
Okay.
Okay. The other question I had was, there's certainly adequate ceiling heights in the basement, but my question was relative to grade. What is the floor-to-window sill height in the basement?
I'm looking on Google Street View myself. Mark, do you know the answer? So on Google Street View, Mr. Olick, I'm looking and, I mean, the... let's see. I don't know. There are four small windows currently. Mark, what's the, what's the... do you know what the ceiling-to-window height is in the basement?
Offhand, I don't. We haven't done a grading plan yet, but from the street elevation level at zero at the sidewalk to the rear of the property, the grading does go down. So we would have more opportunity to get those in large windows the further we went back towards the rear of the property.
No, I see from the drawings, it's the topography of the lane, that it slopes downhill. So, but in the front, it seems pretty minimal. And I just want to make sure, I mean, if we approve this, I will suggest there be no building code relief. Just want to make sure that the windows comply with code, because in the front elevation, it looks relatively small. Or the grade looks pretty high relative to the windows.
In the rear, each unit in the basement level has a door providing...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and there's no sleeping room in the basement.
So this is a question of light and ventilation.
Okay, I understand.
On the proposed front elevation, you may notice the windows on the first floor are a lot taller than in the rest of the floors, and that's to let that natural light go into the basement. You will see stairs that go into the basement. It's a very open plan stairs. It's not typical. And that's to illuminate that basement very well. That's a key component.
Okay.
Questions answered to your satisfaction, Mr. Olick?
Yeah, I mean, again, if we approve, I'll just make sure there's no building code relief.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Mark worked closely with the communities and the director of Butters to come to bring them to support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam of the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon from Counselor's Office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support based on work with neighbors in the community and the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association and agreements and assistance with setbacks and counseling for neighbors. Councilwoman Flynn would like to support ways on this compromises, good faith efforts, and work with the community. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, City Councilor, East West Abbey, Georgia's office, would like to echo the sentiments of the Mayor's Office and Counselor Flynn's office in going support. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I have one raised hand here, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Samuel Kelly, you're on mute.
Hi, I'm the neighbor in 536 East Third. You know, I do still have some concerns about this project in communication with the developers, but I am concerned about the scale of the project as a whole, especially out the back at this point.
Okay. Okay, thank you for putting that on the record. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and no building code relief.
Is there a second?
A second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Fortune, can we go back to 266 Newbury Street, please?
Joe, Madam Chair, whatever you'd like. Going to go back to the change I called earlier, calling BOA 108-6604, 266 Newbury Street. This is a change in occupancy from one restaurant to two restaurants, including takeout service for first-floor restaurant. Violations, Article 8, Section 7. Restaurant with takeout use item 36A is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Can I be heard? Can you hear me?
Are you the applicant?
I am the attorney for the applicant.
Okay, please put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
Good morning. My name is Attorney Jack J.A.C.K. Milgram, M.I.L.G.R.A.M. My office address is 21 Mayor Thomas J. McGrath Highway, Suite 203, Quincy, Massachusetts, 02169.
So tell us, tell us what you're proposing, because it sounds like, are they... the thing that really we need to know, are these both takeout restaurants or is just one of them takeout restaurant? And the name of the restaurant?
The name is not... The name of the facility is going to be Mr. T., T.E.A. And the building, the restaurant space in the building is currently vacant. It's one space with two floors. We're asking that the certificate of occupancy be changed to allow for two restaurants. My client will be taking the first floor, which is the upper level, and that's the level that we're requesting a takeout proviso. The bottom level right now remains vacant. And in 1994.
So, hold on.
Go ahead, yeah.
Mr. T. will occupy the first floor.
That is correct.
Does the applicant have experience with takeout in the city of Boston?
Yes, the applicant owns a sushi restaurant in the Brighton district of the city of Boston for more than five years, which has eight seats and takeout. So there's plenty of experience with takeout.
Okay, to hold on, please stay on this video conference call, please. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Yes, your answer is correct.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shanice Puntel with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has been well supported by the community, receiving a letter of non-opposition from the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay and a letter of support from the Back Bay Association. We appreciate the applicant's engagement with the community and at this time, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raise hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, usual takeout language for this applicant.
Second, Tyra.
Thank you, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, Mr. Fortune, we understand that the applicant for Chelsea Street is on.
Very good, Madam Chair, I'll call that into the record. Calling DOA 106506881 Chelsea Street.
You know what's interesting?
This is a change of use from eight residential parking spots to eight parking spots for sale of motor vehicles. Violation is Article 53, Section 8, uses forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Anthony Cristallo, 81 Chelsea Street, 02128 East Boston.
Go ahead, sir, tell us what you're proposing to do.
I zoned it years ago for eight parking spots. Now I want to park cars there, sell some cars.
Okay, so this is, so this is a residential sub-district, which is a 3F 2000. So the use of car sales is forbidden. I don't know if you've seen BPDA recommendations, but they also state that this is not in support of the neighborhood. In the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, all it is is a parking space, so I suppose it's adequate.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Secretary here, Paul Tamico has also spoke on this one. He said 81 Chelsea Street should only be approved for six spaces due to poor maneuverability and lack of adequate space.
Okay. It's quite, sorry, so can you just stay quiet while we go through our process? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the Office of Neighborhood Services held an abattoir meeting on August 5th, where the applicant addressed the concerns of the abattoir. Thank you.
Alina, did he propose, did he put on the record what his hours of operation are? And if he's proposing any screening and buffering to the property?
He did the hours of operation, yes, but the other part, no.
No, okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, it's Jeff Hampton at the BPDA.
Yes, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPDA. We've recommended straight denial on this proposal. The reason being, one of the oldest statements that the chairwoman has stated is that this goes with the land and not with the person. And it's also located smack dab in the middle of a residential street. And it just happens, you know, it looked like it was accessory parking at one point in time. Now you're introducing a commercial used to a purely residential block in East Boston. So we recommend denial.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
Again, Tyra.
Was that a second?
Again, Tyra.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Calling next case, calling DOA 1075808576 East Second Street. This is a renovation repair of an existing four-story wood deck and deck expansion. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. The new roof structure erected and large access shall be through the hatch bulkhead. Article 68, Section 8, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. My client, the owner of the property, is Frank Cavalieri and the Cavalieri Family Trust. Madam Chair, members, this is an existing building with an existing rear porch or rear deck structure that is in a condition where it needs to be repaired and or replaced. In replacing the rear deck structure, my client is seeking to add some additional space. It amounts to about 49 square feet per level. This is currently a four-level deck, and there would be a platform of about seven by seven that would be added to each level. At the same time, there would also be an additional level, a fifth level added, which is actually a co-planar with the top of the roof. It is not on the roof. The violation cited, building height violation, which I believe is erroneous. The, the building is, the roof will not have the deck on it. It's off of the, the roof and it's at the same height as the roof. And with respect to the setback violations, I just point out for the board that this is 576. The lot to the left, which is a corner lot, 572-574, is owned by my client and the parcel to the immediate rear on Dixburg Street, which was before this board actually several months ago to add parking there. That's actually owned by my client as well. That is parking for this building that is the subject of today's hearing, 576.
Okay, so tell us about that. So the reason to add that 49 square feet on every floor, is that for second means of egress?
It does, no, it's not necessary for secondary means of egress. It's just that this is the rental property. My client simply wanted to add some additional space on the decks, just to make them a little bit bigger. They're, they're not big to begin with. And, you know, this is an area that, that, you know, again, it's just sort of filling in a bit of space that is within the area currently of where the, the platforms are for this, for the scissor stair system. And it's, it's just, again, to add a little bit more of additional space as well as that fifth, fifth level, which is on the same level as the roof as well.
Okay, and who would have access to that top level?
This would be the, the, the top floor unit only. It's not a common deck. Otherwise, it would have to comply with accessibility requirements. So it is for the top floor only.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Hi, Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Ivy George's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, no raise hands.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, I'm going to suggest BPDA design review as well.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next three cases, calling DOA 1044637174 West Seventh Street. There are two companion cases, case DOA 1044641176 West Seventh Street and DOA 1044644178 West Seventh Street. This is a proposed rear addition, new side roof decks and renovate. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. New structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, a rear yard is insufficient. Madam Chair, all three proposals have the same purpose and that same violation. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the owner of these properties and the developer, and Madigan. Madam Chair, members, the plan set that I submitted, I tried to provide a connection and some continuity. Yes, that's what I submitted, a connection and some continuity between the projects so that they could be understood in toto rather than just taking them all individually. So on the first slide there, what you can see is, and pay no attention to the shadings, although they do indicate the three different properties, but you'll see that these are, are connected buildings. And the, the purpose here for all of them is to add some additional space in the rear and also just to complete renovation of the building. So here, you can see that the crosshatched areas for the building showing the proposed addition areas. And on the, the third building at 178, where you see proposed addition, and it's a much larger rectangle, that is an addition that is occurring on the upper level only. And as the plans scroll down, that will become more evident when you see side elevations. Each building would get a roof deck. The roof decks would be 12 by 14, 12 by 15, and they'd be centrally located on the roof of each building. With respect to the.
So councillor, just so that we can leave the issue of roof deck alone, how are they accessed and to which unit? Is it available to all units?
Sure, no, there is a private decks there for the top unit of each building only, and they're accessed in each case by a roof hatch.
Okay. Okay, so now I think we should pay attention to what's proposed at 176?
Sure, 176, if, if we could scroll down, you'll get a much better idea, to sheet A-2.1, and this is after all of that, it's, if I look down. 2.1, there at 2.1, you can see this is a cross-section essentially going across all of the buildings, but you can see the proposed addition area for 178, which is just a third-story addition. That building in the rear is only two levels. So that would be filled in so that it would essentially be made more uniform with the other buildings and adding some additional living space for the benefit of that unit on the top floor.
And how many units in each one of these properties?
Yes, these, these are three-unit buildings, three-unit dwellings.
Each, yeah, okay. Any basement living?
The, no, the basements are, so on sheet D, I'm sorry, on, it's existing. On sheet A 1.1, you can see that 174 is just a basement storage area, mechanicals and utilities. A 1 point, and then, I'm sorry, 176, the basement is again just a, just a basement area. No, no living area down there. And in 178, it's the same case. It's, it's just a typical basement, no living space, and it's actually only crawl space in the rear.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are accurate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody to hear to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have no letters of support, but we have one letter of opposition, and the opposition is about the decks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no raise hands.
Anna, you fine by any chance?
Yes, I'm here, but I'm speaking in opposition.
Okay, please put your name and address for the record.
Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition due to consent from neighbors and the City Side Neighborhood Association regarding the roof decks. Councilor Flynn would like to see more work with the community on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor?
Again, Madam Chair, these are, you know, fairly standard-sized private roof decks, access by hatch. They do provide some additional usable open space for the top floor units. We understand that there often is opposition to, to roof decks, but as I say, I think these are modestly sized. They're positioned toward the central area of each of the buildings. And quite frankly, there are a lot of, of roof decks in the area, but, you know, there, there always does seem to be some degree of opposition to them.
Thank you. Given the information, both in support and in opposition, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Second, Ed Devoe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1023216, 269 to 271 Dorchester Street. This is the director, new three-story, three-family dwelling. Violation is Article 27S, Section 9. This is in the South Boston iPod. T.E.A., Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, lot area is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, lot width is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hold on, Mr. Mahoney. Joe, did you want to?
I am recusing myself on this matter.
Okay, so with, with Mr. Rogelio's recusal, we have a five-member board. The applicant has the, a couple of choices. One is to go ahead, and the second is to request an administrative deferral. If you, if, if the applicant decides to go ahead, please note that you need the support of all five members for your project to be approved. Please, Mr. Mahoney, what's your decision?
Madam Chair, we'd like to proceed.
Okay. Go ahead, tell us what you're proposing to do.
Patrick Mahoney, on behalf of the applicant, Desmond Quealy and Steve Lundblom, with a business address of 160 Federal Street. Madam Chair, what we're proposing here at 267A, 269 Dorchester Street, which is currently a vacant lot, straddling between two zoning districts, although cited in Article 68, which is allowed under Section 12-1. Madam Chair, what we're proposing is it, is to erect a three-family, a three-story building with the first unit is a bi-level unit entering in off of Dorchester Street with a bedroom in the rear, in, in the rear, the grade slopes to allow for an egress window. That will be a one-bedroom unit consisting of 1,014 square feet if approved with two bathrooms. The second floor is a floor through as well. The second floor is a floor through, as well as is the third floor unit, a floor-through one-bedroom unit approximately 500 and 600 square feet respectively. The, some of the work in the community has consisted of reducing a floor, so bringing the height of the building down to 35 feet in compliance with zoning in that regard.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry councillor. So, it's still a four fam, it's, okay, so it's a three-family dwelling, so, and it's a three-story, three-family dwelling?
That's correct. The first floor, Madam Chair, is partially below grade in the rear. Because it is not more than 65% above grade, it technically doesn't count as a story, but there are four living levels.
Okay, so knocking it down a floor, does it reduce your violations? I guess it reduces somewhat your FAR, does it?
There is still an FAR violation, Madam Chair, but it's the height violation would be reduced, certainly.
Okay.
The other violations remain intact. And again, it is between two zoning sub-districts. They did choose to cite it in Article 68. Under 12-1, which is transitional zoning, the least restrictive zone would apply, which is, in this case, a plans examiner thought to cite Article 68.
So let's ask you, is any parking being proposed?
No, Madam Chair, no parking is being proposed here.
And if I'm looking at the plans there, is that a headhouse?
It is not. That's an existing building to the right, Madam Chair. There is no headhouse nor any roof deck with this proposal.
Okay, and, okay. Let's see, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, I'm concerned about the plans. It feels like they're trying to cram a lot into a small area. Unit 2 is, what, 480-some square feet? I mean, it's under 500, which is, we usually consider as the minimum for a one-bedroom studio. And the basement, while the topography slopes at the gray level, I mean, you can, the amount of light and ventilation that would get in would be extremely minimal, as far as I can tell.
And, Mr. Ehrlich, were you concerned about the bedroom sizes? The one-bedrooms at 500 and 600 square feet?
It's less, the unit 2 is, I believe, let me, hang on.
480.
487, I believe.
Yep, we'd be happy to make that a studio, Mr. Ehrlich, by removing the doors.
But either way, it's under 500.
450 square feet is the BPDA recommended minimum square.
The MD is 500. I mean, there's various recommendations. It's awfully small.
Yep, I mean, we would be subject to BPDA design review, so we could work through that with the BPDA in, by making the one-bedroom a studio in full compliance with their minimum sizes of 450 square feet.
You know, this is a comment to all people who are listening to this, to this, this meeting and watching this meeting. We are progressive, more and more, we are seeing projects that come in that look like sketches, that look like placeholders. And, you know, we take our jobs seriously, and so we would like not to leave things to the discretion of BPDA staff. It's us and our signatures that are on these decisions, and it's Mr. Ehrlich's signature that is on the plans. So this is a serious consideration for us. So we do not like to just play a little bit of footsie on this. So let me just make sure that what we see is, when, the first thing in the door is that it meets all standards and it's comfortable to us, so we're not leaving something else to our next step. Mr. Ehrlich, do you want to say something?
Yes, I absolutely agree. When I stamp these drawings, I stamp them as-is. And even if we have a proviso BPDA design review, we often never know what those design changes are. So we're stamping what we see. In addition to what I consider a substandard unit, unit 2, I also have problems. What is the, what's the light? The front of the building, the basement is completely below grade, right? And in the back, it's at grade, is that correct?
That's right, Mr. Ehrlich. The front of the building is a mechanical area with also a laundry room. There is no living space, I mean, with the exception of it being a laundry room, but we should be excluded from FAR. That is not a bedroom, it is not an office. It is a laundry room and a mechanical area in the front.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, so tell, just tell me, I don't see on the proposed basement floor plan, I don't see where the windows are located. Where are they?
In the basement level, Mr. Ehrlich, in the rear of the building, there are three windows on the, off of the bedroom that, and there's...
Yes, I see that. Nothing, nothing on the sides?
That's correct. There's nothing on the sides because that would be a building code violation.
I agree, it would be. And as it is, you're, I think, skirting awfully close. I mean, you've got ceiling height of 7'8".
Yeah, it's in the front area, Mr. Ehrlich, it's 8'10" in the rear, along with every floor. That's correct.
Okay, well, as I said in the beginning, Madam Chair, I think there's an attempt to squeeze a little bit too much into...
If I may...
Thank you, thank you. We're just gonna stop conversation. Now, Mr. Mahoney, any questions from the board? Other members of the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair. Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support. We held an abutters meeting, and then they worked with the community to come down a flight. So they had another community meeting last week, and Andrew Skler was in support. Thank you.
Madam of the chair members of the board, Anna Calderon, from councillor Flynn's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support due to a good community process and work with the neighbors. In particular, the Andrew Square Neighborhood Association supported this project due to the team's willingness to work with them on trash removal issues with the installation of trash compactors, as well as safety and security issues with lighting and cameras. Councillor Flynn would like to offer his support based on the team adhering to these agreements with the neighbors and the civic group. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, councillor East Rusabi, George's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more raised hands, Ms. Ambassador?
No raising, Madam Chair.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion? Because it sounds to me, Mr. Ehrlich, you're comfortable with the one, one-bedroom. And are you thinking that the other bedrooms that are, the second-floor bedroom, which is 487 square feet, should be converted to a studio?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion for denial without prejudice because I think they can come back to us with the plans that would be approved.
Can we mark up the plans so that we can cancel out on the second floor or for that second unit, just put an X through so that it is a studio?
I would rather they come back with a full set of plans that complies.
Okay, may I have a motion? So there's...
I'm gonna make a motion to deny without prejudice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, calling the next...
Councillor, go ahead.
Madam Chair, calling the last case for 9:30, calling BOA 103-9452, 45 Dorset Street. This is to demolish the existing building, erect a new four-story, nine-unit building with 11 off-street parking spaces, rear and roof decks. The violation is Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking loading requirement design. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking loading requirement insufficient parking. Article 65, Section 8, use regulations, MFR, nine units is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 65, Section 9, the number of lot stories has been exceeded. Article 65, Section 9, the height has exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Tim Johnson, architect, 599 East Broadway. My client also has his handwriting, if he could be unmuted, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Yes, Madam Chair. A client proposes to demolish the existing structure and erect a three-story, seven-unit building with 11 off-street parking spaces. With community input, the project was scaled down from four stories with nine units. So now the...
Councillor, let's just start off, because as I've said in the past, our baseline is the zoning. So what is, what zoning district is this in?
Madam Chair, this is in Article 65, three-family, 5,000 square feet.
So this is three-family, 5,000? So what's the lot area for this, for this address?
6,917 square feet, Madam Chair.
Okay. And so essentially, you're doubling the, more than doubling. Okay, so please then, go ahead. Tell us about the project and tell us how contextual it is.
Yes, Madam Chair. Through community input, the project was scaled down to three stories, which now it meets the number of allowable stories. And down from nine units to seven units, parking still remains at 11 off-street parking spaces. All units will either have a patio or a rear deck, and the top units will have private roof decks via bulkhead with a roof door. There are seven units. One is a garden unit, which will have a patio, that's a three-bedroom, two-bath, and that's the largest unit at 1,583 square feet. And the other six units are two-bedroom, two-bath units, approximately 13, 30 square feet. Units one and two will be handicap accessible via a wheelchair lift accessible from the front accessible door. And we have a butter and civic support for the project, which letters we submitted.
Okay. Can, Collette, can you please go and show us what that garden unit looks like? Please?
It'd be the next frame after this one. Right there. So...
The garden unit is unit 7?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And so it basically looks out to the street at the front level and has window wells and no bedrooms in the rear. So what are the bedrooms? So what are the, the window is the side window well by the driveway?
Yes.
Glass block windows on the front?
Right, correct.
So is it a garden or is it a basement dwelling?
Well, we do have, I think we scroll a little bit further down. That's it. We have a patio area directly off the living space at grade. So that will open up, and you can see it gets southwest exposure, so that'll get some nice sunlight in the afternoon. So we feel that's a strong relationship for a garden unit. Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, and tell us about, so it's all new construction. How many parking spaces are you providing? 11?
11.
Seven units, okay?
Yes, four will be, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair. Four will be garage units, four will be garage spaces, and seven will be on-grade spaces.
Okay. And tell us about how this building fits into context, please?
Well, again, with community input, we brought the number of stories down to...
I wanted to talk about the existing community, you know?
Sure.
Is this, I see that there's a BHA project next door, but tell me about what the rest of the street looks like?
Yes, Madam Chair. On two sides of the project, there is a BHA facility, which is at 3 1/2 stories. Its parking area abuts our rear parking area. To the left of the site is a three-story building, 160 Boston Street. And that's kind of the ceiling of the street. It's three-story, three families, some larger, because the BHA is a larger multifamily. So working with the community by bringing it down to three stories, we also used a manse to even hide the third floor. We feel contextually that it fits in a lot better.
So I'm looking at it on Google, and everything looks like it's essentially pitched roofs, three families on this street, but for the two properties which are ennobly. But the basic street view looks like it's a very consistent pattern.
Yes, Madam Chair. There are gable roofs predominant on the street. However, where we get near Boston Street, we do have two nice examples of traditional triple-deckers, which I think this building would relate to.
How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are adequate, you know, again, they're kind of trying to cram unit 7 into a basement setting, but the way that the landscaping is considered with the parking lot, it is more of a walkout. So it is more of a garden-level apartment than just a basement apartment. You know, everybody's trying to get every square foot they can.
And you know, I mean, because this is a 3, 5,000, you know, we should not feel compelled to approve everything because it looks like perhaps unit 2 might work, but I'm still concerned about unit 1. But regardless, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Van Del, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. There were two abutters needing help on place for this proposal, and the applicant met specifically with the McCormick Civic Association, who voted to support this proposal as it's presented today. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal as well.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have five letters of support and one letter of opposition.
And what's the opposition based on?
The surrounding community, the look of the building compared to the other around the community.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands.
Okay, thank you.
One from councillor Baker's office.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Julie Ryan from councillor Frank Baker's office. The applicant worked with the abutters and the civic to bring down unit amount and add parking, and therefore, the councillor would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Can I unmute it?
Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Adam Burn's, project proponent. I had raised my hand previously to speak up when Tim Johnson was introducing himself, but we're beyond that, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's the end of the raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Given the level of community support, I will make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. But I would ask that the BPDA look in particular at the issue of neighborhood context.
There are seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
I am, I'll go on the record in opposition, but motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
It is now 11 o'clock. Our next series of hearings for rediscussions are at 11:30. This meeting is now adjourned until 11:30. The, any applicants who are interested in deferral, please let Ms. Ambassador know so that we can proceed quickly through the 11:30s. Thank you. Thank you.
Adam?
The Board of Appeal is back in session. Just a reminder, please, as soon as we call the caller case, please raise your hand so we can be expeditious about hearing from you. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30 only?
437 Frankfurt.
For the record, calling BOA 1037522, 437 Frankfurt Street. Name and address, for the record, please.
I just would like to recuse myself from this.
Thank you, Joe.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner for 437 Frankfurt Street, as the board will, in all likelihood, only have five members requesting a administrative deferral, I would request a deferral to a time when we believe the board will be fully constituted with seven members. I'm not sure when that will be. I believe the last deferral that was given out was for January, so if the board anticipates that we will have additional members at that time, I think that's an appropriate time for a deferral.
Counselor, we cannot, we do not know when the City Council will be moving ahead with their approval, so we are basically stuck in the same position we were in, we've been in for months. So we cannot assure you anything, but we will continue, just give you a date, assuming at least you'll have a six-member, you'll have a six-member board, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? And the date, please?
We will have a date of January 12th at 1:00.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
Patrick Mahoney for 229-231 Bunker Hill Street.
For the record, calling BOA 104-8915, 229-231 Bunker Hill Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney with the business address of 160 Federal Street.
Counselor, what are you requesting, a deferral?
That's correct, Madam Chair. We were recently reached out to by some of the neighbors, and my client is reworking his design, although he was complete with community process prior to the last referral, which was COVID-related.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed Devoe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The date, please?
Yeah, I also have a date of January 12th at 1:00.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Madam Chair, going to call the first case, calling BOA 948-426-115 Leyden Street. This is a demolish the existing structure and erecting new eight-residential building, unit building with nine parking spaces. The violation is Article 25, Section 5, Blood Hazard District. Article 53, Section 8, the multifamily dwelling unit is a forbidden use. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor area issue is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9, the front yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 27, C-5, this is in the East Boston iPod, and Article 53, Section 56.5, off-street parking maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. I'm on behalf of the petitioner, Sun Property Group, Evie Fava. With me is also Sharon Gentjes, who is the architect with Joy Street Design. And this proposal is before the board after a prior deferral to go back and rework some of the design elements of this. I'm not sure if the Spohlen has the slide deck, but we supplied that to the boards last week.
What, do you have the slide deck?
These are the only two that I have. Let me just double-check this one. Yep, these are the only two I have, right here.
The screen that we are seeing is, it just says "rediscussion."
Oh, sorry, two seconds. It gets frozen, just give me two seconds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Counselor, please go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, this project involves an existing, pre-existing three-family dwelling on a 6270 square-foot lot. The lot is about 120 feet in depth. Our proposal would renovate the existing structure. We would erect in addition to create a new eight-unit dwelling with on-street parking for a total of 12 vehicles. This is located in the 2F-4,000 district. The proposal will be for a residential structure with a total of about 7,900 square feet. Upon completion, this would be intended for homeownership. A number of changes that we've made throughout this process, Madam Chair, include maintaining the original architecture and design, so it's very consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. We reduced this project down from a larger number of units to eight, increasing our parkage up to 12. We reduced this from a full three-story building down to a two-and-a-half, well, two-and-a-half modified with dormers. Reduced the project total gross floor area from about 9,900 to about 7,900, 20% reduction. We also increased open space in the rear portion. We can stop right at this slide right here. Madam Chair, you can see here that the architect has gone to great lengths, if you look at the surrounding context of the neighborhood, to try to mirror this building, to make it quite consistent with the type of architecture that's typical on that section of Leyden Street. And although we are proposing a multifamily use, it's not inconsistent with a number of other uses that have been approved for this neighborhood, especially where the architecture can be incorporated so as to, you know, to have a very seamless flow with the surrounding neighborhood.
So Counselor, a quick question. So are these a double-sided dormers?
That's correct. Because I do have the elevation, and I can show that when we get to the elevation.
Okay, please go ahead.
Yeah, so if you can jump to the next slide. I'll jump to the next slide as well, I'll get to that during the zone. So you can see here the existing lot. I think it's important to point out, for the existing conditions, Madam Chair, the butter to the left is actually the parking lot for a church. So even though we are requesting relief for the side yard on the left, the impact to the nearest of butter is minimal if nonexistent. There's approximately 40 feet between our property line and the next of butter on Leyden Street as you go up. So most of the budding property to the left is the parking lot for the church. The same condition exists to the rear. Again, there's a parking lot to the rear of this property, which, you know, even though we are requesting a small variance for rear setback, the impact to the rear of butter would be minimal. You can just go to the next slide, please? Again, this is all based upon the community process and, you know, concerns that we did here. The nearest of butter is to our right, and that is the reason why we proposed to incorporate the driveway for this property, where we do show an 11-foot setback for the majority of the building. And that is in excess of what the zoning code requires for the 2F-4,000 district. So the butter to the right, who was the only butter who appeared at the butters' meeting, the concern about proximity to his building, and therefore, we designed this in a way to address that concern by having an 11-foot setback. That bracket will lead to the rear, where we're proposing 12 total parking spaces. You can go to the next slide. You can see on the left side of the screen, the lower level, which does include the 12 parking spaces. I would point out, two of those spaces are tandem. And again, this was in response to concerns and comments that we typically hear through community process about the number of parking spaces. While we did strive to achieve a one-to-one parking, we were able to actually provide additional parking on the site, which appeared to be to address concerns that we did hear about off-street parking this prior.
Counselor, if I'm looking at this correctly, the parking is proposed to be beneath the building?
Yes, the grade of this property, Madam Chair, slopes from Leyden Street down towards the rear portion of the lot, and you'll see that in the elevation where we show the section of the building.
Okay.
So yes, it would be, the spaces, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 through 9, would be under the building.
And so the units look as if they are, what are they, one bedrooms? About 1,000 square feet?
I can go over that. They are all two-bedroom. There is a mix of one and two-bath. They range in size, the smallest, Madam Chair, with Unit 1 is 845 square feet. The largest is 1,060 square feet. So they're all roughly around 1,000 square feet, with the exception of Unit 1 at 845 square feet. So you can jump to that.
Counselor, you know, I'm really curious because, you know, we've essentially been seeing one and two bedrooms. I mean, all morning, I think we've heard, for the number of projects we've heard, what is the rationale behind that? Because, you know, I'm sure there's a demand, I mean, I'm sure because from the projects that we see with property owners, they're looking to expand into the basement or their attics, that there is a demand for three bedrooms and more. So can you tell me what's triggering this, you know, all these proposals for two bedrooms?
That's a great question and a good segue. The same developer, Madam Chair, recently advanced a project one block away at 192 Gladstone Street. That project has been abandoned since the approvals. That did include a mix of larger unit sizes, and it looks as if, based upon some of the marketing analysis, that the three-bedroom, at least, and again, it's neighborhood by neighborhood, the three-bedroom did not seem to have as high a demand based upon recent comparables for that area. The two-bedroom, two-bath, being a bit more generous in sizes, 1,000 square feet, those are larger two-bedroom, two-bath, so it gives a little bit more feel for, you know, comfortable living. These probably could be made into three bedrooms. I think the unit gets a lot tighter at that arrangement, and therefore, two-bedroom, two-bath provides a sufficient amount of living area and a good setup for living, based on at least what market conditions are showing in that neighborhood. I would also point out, for this building, and again, in response to what we heard with respect to the design and the architecture, the original plan was a three-story building here with roof decks. That's been eliminated to go to the pitch roof with the dormers and no roof deck above the upper level. So we were trying to be extremely sensitive to what the reaction was from the neighborhood on this particular project. And I do understand that we will probably hear opposition from the mayor's office on this, but we, I want to stress the fact that we work very closely to make this design work for this particular area.
And how is the handicap unit being accommodated?
So I believe Sharon is on, I do show in the utility, near the utility level, we do provide for a lift, and I think that Xbox on the left side of the screen, near the utility room, allows for accessibility up to the main level.
Okay, thank you. How were the plans, Mr. Olick?
I would agree with Mr. Lynn that the rendering is nice in terms of context. It does seem a little bit, this is a two-family neighborhood, and this is, whether it's reduced or not, it's eight units. So I guess I would ask Mr. Lynn whether the architectural context may be okay, but is this really transforming? I don't know what's happening in the rest of the neighborhood, I'm curious, because eight units is a lot. To go from two to eight, or three to eight is a lot, big jump.
Yeah, and I certainly understand that, Mr. Olick. I can give a little bit of, just quick background about the context. Leyden Street itself, including this side of Leyden Street, has seen, you know, reemergence of popularity for multis, provided that parking can be accommodated. And the projects that were recently improved on at 31 and 35 Leyden, at the end of this block, actually, had similar characteristics, where they had gone from pre-existing non-conforming three-family or four-family units buildings, which were in, you know, somewhat puff shape, up to a more, you know, modern multifamily. Again, parking being the key here, even though this is within close proximity to Orient Heights Train Station. Providing at least one-to-one parking seems to be a common theme, and I think the developer in this case really wanted to achieve, you know, a better ratio based upon the comments that we heard. Again, the design being a big factor here, that we feel has really addressed the comments and concerns that we heard.
Are there any other eight, or eight-plus units on that block or street?
Yes, I know of three on this particular block. In the next block over, there's a nine, less than, probably 120 yards after you cross the nearest cross street. And again, all one-to-one parking.
Sorry, Counsel, were you the proponent for those two projects on the street?
For all three, yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Fortune, did you have a comment?
I did, Madam Chair. I just wanted to get a correction. It's nine parking spaces, correct? It's nine parking spaces, correct?
There are 12 parking spaces.
We have, for the record, demolished the existing structure and erect new eight residential unit building with nine parking spaces.
So we did do an updated set of plans, and I did check the notice, and I did see 12 parking spaces on one of the notices.
And some of the approval is, Mr. Lynn, just so you know, in the agreement to demolish and erect a two-and-a-half-story, eight-unit building with not nine parking spaces.
Yeah, so we're actually, by providing more, you know, we're adding a number of spaces based upon comments that we heard.
Mr. Fortune, the drawings that I have show 12 parking spaces.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what is, what was basically written into the violations here and the purpose. And then also, Mr. D'Amico spoke on this. He said that he requested 12 parking spaces. In his opinion, there should be only eight parking spaces provided.
Okay, thank you.
But we do have tandem.
Hold on, Mr. Lynn. Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this project?
Madam Chair, secretary, I just wanted also to reiterate, there are 50 letters in support, zero opposition.
Okay. Is anybody on this meeting here to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in opposition. At this moment, this proposal didn't receive enough support from the community. The abutters have concerns regarding the high number of the units in a 2F zone, the lack of green space, and the density. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Councillor, Lydia Edwards. The councillor would also like to go on the record in opposition to this proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands.
Thank you.
Boris, you're unmuted. Boris, you're unmuted. Madam Chair, he sent me a chat saying he was in opposition.
Yes, let me just look at the chat. He, for the record, Mr. Contreras is at 1 foot light. And he is opposed. Okay, is there anybody else with a raised hand?
Yes, Madam Chair, sorry, just had to mute someone that was speaking. Carla, you're unmuted.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Councillor at large, Michael Flaherty. Councillor doing on record in opposition.
Thank you. Miss, let's just see.
Madam Chair, he sent a message to the chat. I think he might be having problems with his thing, his log.
Yeah, so can you please, Collette, can you make sure our staff that his comments are put into the record? Given that information, let me, let me do a couple of things. The owner of 113 Leyden Street is opposed to the project. It's, he has a two-family, and it's the nine units that he's concerned about. He's concerned about the access of the parking into, and the impact, the accessing of the parking on his project. I guess that's it. BPDA Jeff, did the BPDA have a comment on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, we made a recommendation on this proposal back in July. And it was for eight units and 12 spaces. We recommend a denial without prejudice. Proposal is excessive in density and lot coverage. Appellants should consider a reduction in density, special attention to the rear yard condition.
Thank you. So given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to deny without prejudice.
And then, Jero, Jero.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councillor.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-5803, 31 Monmouth Street. This is to confirm occupancy to two-family and erect a rear and vertical addition, renovate and change occupancy to a four-unit residential dwelling with roof deck. The violation of Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod, Article 53, Section 56, insufficient parking, Article 53, Section 8, use is forbidden, Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR, Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, Article 53, Section 9, the number of allowed stores has been exceeded, Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, and Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of Station Air Crespo Construction. Madam Chair, this is a project located in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston, where we are proposing to maintain and preserve the existing structure. This will involve the complete renovation, both interior and exterior, with upgrades to life safety, and changing the occupancy from two residential units to four, with a reprogramming of the entire structure. This will involve shed dormers, and we would slightly the third level. And we would perform an exterior upgrade that would conform to the Eagle Hill design standards. Upon completion, this is intended for homeownership, as condominiums. All intended to be two-bedroom, two-bath. The unit sizes range from about 950 square feet up to about 1,025 square feet. And we are, again, proposing to keep the entire building intact and perform strictly renovations on the exterior and interior. I think we have a slide coming up that will show the comparison of the before and after. If we could just jump to that, because the next slide, one more slide. So the existing condition is shown on the left, with the proposed condition on the right. And we had presented this to the Eagle Hill Civic Association and worked closely with their team to ensure that we were coming up with something that respects the standards that Eagle Hill looks for. And I believe that is reflected in the number of support letters that have been submitted to the board for this project. With respect to the relief that we're requesting, the existing condition, Madam Chair, on the side left is a 1.4-foot setback. That is already a pre-existing, non-conforming condition. We aren't proposing to exacerbate that any further. Any addition or extension will stay within that plane. We are proposing to extend living space to the lower level. That will be a garden-level unit. And with respect to that, there's a great separation from Monmouth Street down towards the rear portion of the property that allows for a walkout of that level. The ceiling height for the lower level, and I did include this, Mr. Ehrlich, on the plan, there's an elevation showing that there will be at least eight feet, their ceiling height in the lower level. And there will be sufficient access through windows that are being proposed for bedrooms. We can jump to the next level, our next slide after this.
Councillor, why was this deferred the last time?
I believe this was on originally for, this may have been on pre-COVID, Madam Chair, and for all requests, and then be scheduled again and deferred again. I believe there were some updates and changes we had made to the upper level, which is presently before the board, and that reduced the actual extent of the addition on the third level to address some concerns of some butters.
So this is existing conditions. Collette, can we move to proposed, proposed conditions?
So we're seeing here is the garden level on the left, first floor, in the middle, and the second floor. The second floor does show a deck off the rear. We are not proposing any roof deck, even though the original petition talked about a roof deck going above the third level. That is not being proposed as part of this proposal. You can see the garden level does have a patio setback from the right property line. That would be an area that would be excavated, and then there's a stairwell that goes up to the rear. So.
Okay, so the floor, what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the garden level, did you say again?
It is eight feet, and we do have an elevation showing the
Okay.
the floor-to-ceiling between the basement, ground level, and the first floor.
Okay, hold on then, please. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
The plans are fine. I am confused by something you said. There is a roof deck being proposed, Mr. Lynn, is there?
The roof deck, I think, is accessed, it's above the, above the second level, Mr. Ehrlich. It's not proposed above the third level. Off of the, off of the third level.
No.
Can we go to that next page?
If you look at A200, it shows a roof deck.
Okay, I apologize. I thought we had, I can let Sharon explain. I believe that when we modified the rear portion of the building. But Sharon, if you want to explain what that condition is.
Yeah, so we ended up, we took it off, but we added it back when we made the modification to the third floor. We pulled that back 10 feet. But rather than extend their deck out 10 feet, which was going to block the views of the neighbors, what we did was we only extended their deck out five feet, but then we put the roof deck on top so that they could have more of a external landscape space.
Okay, and.
If you look at the side elevation, it'll be clear.
Yes, yes, 8200, side elevation west, that's what I'm looking at. You access to that deck is from an exterior stairwell, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant worked closely with the abutters and addressed most of the concerns. Eagle Hill Civic Association voted in support of the proposal based on changes the applicant made, based on the feedback of the community, especially the reduction on the third floor level. We would like to go on the record in support with BPDA's review. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Councillor, Lydia Edwards. The councillor would also like to go on the record in support of this proposal. She would like to ask that during the design review process, special attention be paid to the pullback on the third floor and that the proponent continues to work with the abutters on their concerns regarding the sightline. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councillor of Ivy George's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the secretary here, we have 16 letters of support, and we have four letters of opposition.
Mr. Fortune, what is the opposition based on?
The opposition, from what I've read of the two of the four letters, is basically losing their views and parking.
Okay. Jeff, what was the BPDA's recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Anton, BPDA recommended approval with design review.
Thank you. Mr. Ambassador, any more raised hands?
Yes, I have one raised hand, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Ellen, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Ellen Fogarty. I'm an 18-year resident of 42 Monmouth Street, across the street. And I'm flipping out about the changes being made due to the lack of parking we have now and the fact that several of my neighbors across the street will lose their views.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for approval with the sign of you.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, calling the last case for 11:30, calling BOA 105-3415, 14 Alaska Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to seven-unit residential dwelling and parking, and erect in addition to an existing building for additional units. The violation is Article 10, Section 1. Off-street parking should not be located less than five feet from the side lot line. Article 50, Section 28, multifamily dwelling use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Madam, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, and our business is Jeff from 51 Topson Road, Wiltshire, Mass. With us today is the architect, Tanya Carrier, in an outlook through the project. We are here today seeking relief to change the legal architecture of the building from a two-bedroom dwelling, seven residential units with seven parking spaces. The existing sub-district is a 2F4,000, and the lot size is 11,050 square feet. The violation is as follows. It's a forbidden use, MFR is a forbidden use in this district. Front yard setback, Madam Chair, we are going for a modal setback. The additional lot area is 2,000 square feet, we have approximately 1,600 square feet. And I'll let Tanya, when she goes over the site plan, can explain a little bit about the parking. Units are two-bedroom, two-bath, and the size is ranging from 90 to 15 square feet to approximately 1,500 square feet. Tanya, you want to take over and give me the site plan and the floor plan a little bit?
Sure, yes, this is Tanya Carrier from Costa Design. For the site plan, we're proposing to retain the existing structure at a rear addition and then also a side addition to the right side. The parking would be located under the addition, seven parking spaces, one per each unit, with the existing curb cut. And then we're proposing a substantial green area surrounding the building. We've set the front entry back in the center to break up the massing so that the existing building and new building have a smaller massing and appear as two structures connected in the center. And inside, we're proposing seven units, each with two bedrooms, around 1,000 square feet. The smallest one at 915 square feet, and the largest at 1206 square feet. Two bedrooms, two baths in all the units, and then storage and mechanical area in the basement. And then on the exterior, we're proposing to retain the existing style and detailing of the building, and then just replicate that on the other side, on the addition.
So, Collette, Collette, do me a favor. Can you show us the ring from the street view?
It's at the end.
Okay, thank you.
So here's the proposed rendering. The left side is the existing structure, and the right side would be our proposed addition.
And do you have a view that shows how the connection works? Because, you know, this might be a technicality, but it could be viewed as two buildings on the same lot. Okay, I see it, okay? And the parking is proposed underneath. And is that the only curb cut, or is there a second curb cut?
One curb cut only in the existing location.
Okay, excellent. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The plans are okay.
Let me ask you, I know, looking across the street, it looks like there is a building that's, that's a brick building that's out of character from the rest of the street. But can you give us a sense of what's on the street?
Yes, Madam Chair, there's a mixture of twos and threes. That building, I think, is like a 15-unit building that could probably, but also has enough size to that building, I'm betting.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The proponent had an extensive community process. They worked very closely with neighbors and Derek de Butters and did make changes based on their recommendations. We would like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you. Sam, are you on? Is Sam on from the city councillor's office? Any other raised hands?
I do have Daniel Hutchins from President Janey's office.
Thank you.
And you're unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the board. My name is Daniel Hutchins, and I'm here on behalf of President Janey. President Janey would like to go on record in support of this project. We also received notification from the Roxbury Seven Points Neighborhood Association and the Alaska and Perrin Streets Association that they are also in support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have eight letters of support and 11 letters of opposition.
And Mr. Fortune? And Mr. Fortune, what was the opposition based on?
Obviously, parking is the biggest issue.
Thank you.
I have one more raised hand.
Thank you very much, good morning. But um councillor Janey's office already gave our support. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve B P D A designer view.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we adjourn, there are a number of new cases that we will be hearing at one o'clock. If anybody is going to be requesting withdrawal or a deferral. Please let Miss Ambassador know ahead of time so that we can um we can then proceed proceed that, okay? Meeting is adjourned until one o'clock. Appeal for September sixth is back in session. Mr. Fortune, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm gonna call one o'clock. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Address first, please.
Yes, Mr. Fortune, this is Attorney Joseph Feaster, one R Lorenzo Street in Dorchester.
Okay, give me two seconds, second caller to the record, Mr. Feaster, calling case B O A one zero three nine four five seven one R Lorenzo Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, one eighty-three State Street, Suite Six, Boston, Mass. zero two one zero nine.
Mr. Feaster, are you requesting a deferral?
Yes, Madam Chair, requesting a deferral. I was informed by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services that there was, well, first and foremost, there was only one community meeting that was held on this particular matter. And as a result of COVID, another one was not scheduled. I just recently learned from Patrick Fandel from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. That he felt that another community meeting needed to be held because of what he was hearing from the neighborhood group as well as from councillor Baker's office. And um in in light of all the circumstances, felt that it was appropriate for me to come and request this deferral today.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date, please.
You have a date of January twelfth at one o'clock.
There's nothing early than that, Mr. Ehrlich, that, I mean, Mr. Fortune, that would be possible. I think Mr. Fandel is on the call. He was, he made his request, was gonna try to get another early community meeting for that to occur.
The earliest, if we can try to get you, we'd try to get you in December eighth, but that's the earliest. We are booked all the way through the October to November.
I will, I'll take that December eighth, I wanna, I'll stay within twenty twenty, Mr. Fortune, if best possible.
Alright, so this will have a new date of December eighth, two thousand twenty at one o'clock. Anything moving forward is gonna be into January.
Alright.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
Mr. Fortune, is Noel Street with.
Yes. Now, I'm gonna call it into the record, so I was just waiting to see if there are any others. For the record, calling B O A one zero zero five nine two eight, two thirty-eight to two forty, Noel Street. Madam Chair, they were making their withdrawing, so I'll make a motion for denial of all prejudice.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I don't know if there's any other hand raising out there.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Ayesha. I'm gonna call the first case, calling B O A one zero seven nine eight three two forty-five Crawford Street. This is a third floor roof extension of approximately ten feet. To enclose the second means of egress and create dormers on both sides of the roof extension. Repair the second means of egress incorporated into the roof extension dormer and motivate. The violation is Article fifty, section twenty-nine, floor duration excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the rear yacht requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Armand Villier, the homeowner at forty-five Crawford Street. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead, tell us what you're proposing to do.
So what I'm proposing to do is uh have a dormer addition added to the third floor. And the two reasons or the three reasons for that is, one is to enclose, so to go out to the second means of egress, you have to go out in a in a narrow path. And patio around the building. So what I wanted to do is extend that roof, so it kinda encloses that area. So I think the best thing to describe that is drawing eight, A eight. And have a visual. The before, the the existing and the proposed.
Is this a one family or a two family?
This is a three family, so there is three floors, each floor is one separate unit. If you go up, scroll up a little higher. So that's what's existing. So as you can see, the second means of egress is the stairs on the on the lower right hand side. So in order to go there, you have to go out in the in the area that's labeled as depth. And between that, that narrow path is about two feet, which is very narrow. And when it and it's open, basically, so when it rains and snows, that, you know, it becomes a very hazardous. Area to walk as a second means of egress. So what I propose to do is, you see where the kitchen and bathroom is that has a roof over? I I would like to extend that roof all the way to the to the right hand side of the prop of the building.
Yes, so. Enclosing the deck.
Enclosing the deck and enclosing that, so going from from the house or from that smaller room there into the second means of egress, it's inside, so you don't have to go outside. The other reason is that.
So has this, has this property been before this board before?
Has it been before with me or or?
You?
No, no, this is the first time.
Okay.
I purchased the property about a year ago and. So this is the first time.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
I'm drawing, sir, I'm.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
One thing I want to add is that I have sent a support letter.
Hold on, please. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Is Jessica here or is somebody from councillor Janey's office?
Madam Chair, this is Patrick Fandel, calling from Mayor Pash's office. Jessica should be on, but our office will be speaking in support of this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Until Jessica's on, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this project?
Madam Chair, I don't see any raised hands, but I also see Connie. I don't know if she can't raise her hand or what's going on, but.
Oh, yeah, let's say, yeah, Connie, we should hear from Connie. Is she, is Connie on the phone?
She's on, yeah, Connie's on.
Okay.
Connie, you're on muted.
Let me, let me, okay, let me, I I like to adjust right here. Okay, so what I think we're hearing is that the residents want to have a competent community member to the building. Who generates public concern as well as we're told that residents in the building are causing damage or having to to the boss and this department.
Connie, 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 can you stop, Connie, Connie, can you hold, hold on for a minute? Can can everybody hear, I I think, Connie, we're having difficulty hearing you because it sounds like there might be some background noise.
There's a problem.
Connie. Connie. So do you talk in section eight? I'm sending her a message through the chat, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Jessica's not on yet, Mr. Ambassador.
No, I do not see Jessica on.
Okay.
I'm gonna try Connie one more time. Connie? Connie?
Did anybody hear what Connie said, who could just highlight, anybody on the board here what Connie said so she so we could highlight what her concerns were?
Madam Chair, it sounded as though she was on a phone call that opposed to giving testimony, at least that's how I took it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry?
This is Ed DeVoe, it it sounded as if she was on a telephone call opposed to addressing the board. That was my take, unless I missed that.
Yeah, I believe that's what I heard also.
Oh, because I did, so let me ask the applicant. Sir, i- is there any concern about your tenants in that space?
Uh, there is no tenants in the space.
So it's entirely empty?
Correct. It's entirely empty. One thing that I wanted to add is I sent my support letter from the abutters, so from my neighbor across the street, from my two neighbors on each side. They are in support of my project and I did send that to Stephanie Haines and Jessica Thomas.
Okay, okay, thank you, so just stay on. Mr. Fortune, do you have anything in the record?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, let's have a motion because it sounds like the mayor's office is in support and it's a de minimis project.
Motion to approve.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, sir.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling B O A one zero seven two six zero six seventy-one Ruthman Street. This is a reconfiguration of the first floor extension to the attic floor with dormers. Total number of units remains the same. The violation is Article nine, section one, extension of a nonconforming use is conditional. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the floor ratio is excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the height requirement is excessive in stories. And Article fifty, section twenty-nine, the height is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small. I have a business as Jeff, I think he wants option road, wearing three masks. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to motivate the existing four family dwelling and to add dormers. Stoning sub district is a three F four thousand. The lot size is four thousand eight hundred sixty square feet. It's regarded to the violations.
So, Ms. 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 Small, is is this? Okay, a couple of questions, is this a legal four family?
Yes, it is.
And is there any occupants in the? And is there any occupants in the basement?
No, there's not.
Okay. And so you're proposing that it remains a four-family with an extension into the attic? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. The attic is, yeah, the attic is where the new unit is going to be. We're taking, the first floor consists of two units currently. We're gonna make the first floor one unit, make the fourth floor an additional unit. So there's only four units within the building.
Okay, so tell us what the first four, you have two units. How many square feet are the two units? And what will the new, the new, new square footage for that first floor be?
So the unit, unit one will be approximately 1,280 square feet. Unit two on the second floor will be 1,350 square feet. Unit three will be 1,384 square feet. And unit four on the attic will be 916 square feet.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the bulk of the attic space will have adequate floor-to-ceiling heights?
That's correct. And the reason why we're doing the dormer is to have the stairs for the egress on the fourth floor to bring it up to code.
Okay, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The plans are okay.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is Jessica Thomas with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. We hosted in a Butters meeting on October 1st. There were neighbors who were appreciative that it was going to add four additional spaces, parking spaces, taking much-needed space off the street. So we'd like to go on record to support the project.
Thank you.
I have one raised, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you. Thank you. For me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michael Duffy with the offices of Tony Davis and Duffy at 100 Cambridge Street, Boston. I represent Rowi Ogami and Townsmen Realty, owners of property at 73 and 75 Ruthven Street, who are direct abutters to the project. We understand that the application is being presented as merely a request for a conditional use permit to extend this nonconforming use. And under that guise, it comes to you as a fairly straightforward proposal, I suppose. I want to disabuse the board of that notion.
Sir, can you please take out all those words and just get to the point? They're too value-laden. I just need facts.
The facts are that this project is being developed by the same developer who developed the project at 10 Ruthven Park, which is an adjacent property. In the instance of 10 Ruthven Park, the board granted variances for a three-unit building on that lot of less than 4,000 square feet with no space on the parcel for parking and for a building that complies with none of the dimensional setbacks or frontage requirements. This application, that application went forward with no notice to my clients who are direct abutters to both 71 Ruthven and 10 Ruthven Park. In fact, there were several other abutters and abutters to abutters who also received no notice of that application, hearing or variance decision. Mr. Ogami, who owns 73 Ruthven Street, has owned that property since 2014 and is identified in the city's tax assessor's department as the owner. Townsmen Realty, of which Mr. Bean is the manager, has owned 75 Ruthven Street since May of 2018. Townsmen, too, is identified as the owner of 75 Ruthven Street in the city's tax records.
So let me ask you. So let me ask you. Do you have a factual position to this project as far as the addition of the dormers?
Our position with respect to this project is that it needs to be considered in connection with the other project that's also being developed by the same developer. It's too dense. It's too great for this area. As I understand the matter, the developer's proposing to put four parking spaces back on the back part of 71 Ruthven Street. The adjacent project, which was approved of the variances, proposes to put three parking spaces on a right-of-way in which my clients have rights of passage. And that right-of-way states that it's forever to remain open for light air and passage. In order to get the variances for the other project from this board, this developer had to represent that they were obtaining an easement from 71 Ruthven Street to allow for cars to turn and make maneuvers to park in those three spots that they're putting on the right-of-way. We don't see any parking plan for this. How are they going to have four parking spaces jammed in back behind there as well?
Okay. Anything else besides the parking and the need for contextual review of this in conjunction with Ruthven Park?
Yes. This is another instance where a direct abutter to this project was not given notice by the city of Boston of this pending application. Second time in a row. The city and this developer and the board are all involved in litigation in the Superior Court concerning the failure to give notice on the prior application for variances. It's galling to think that this could happen again while that litigation is pending. And in fact, Shanti Acquisition, which is the developer of the other project, sent a virtual abutters meeting notice to the prior owner, Abigail Properties, which they well know doesn't own the property anymore because that's a subject of the litigation as well. This is not being advanced in good faith.
Okay, so I get it. So thank you. Any other raised hands for this project?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I'm a little confused. My understanding of this application is that it's to reconfigure the first floor and to add dormers to the attic. I don't see any mention of parking, and I don't see anything of parking in the drawings that we reviewed.
So, Ms. Ambassador, can you mute everybody but the board member and Mr. Small?
Everyone's muted.
Thank you. Mr. Small, is there a specific drawing that we should be looking at for the four parking spaces? And how is access for that space going to work?
Yes, we have, we own the property in the rear. And we're putting three or four parking spaces in the rear. It's not shown on the plan. But we laid that at the community meeting that we are gonna do.
Okay. Mr. Small, I remember Ruthven and how there was a lot of community opposition to that project and that we approved it. So I would just suggest that, you know, that there seems to be a need for kind of bridge building with the neighborhood. So whatever needs to happen, please make sure it happens.
We will.
So given that information, and may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'll make a motion based on the narrow proposal that is in front of us about the extension to the dormers. So I'll make a motion for approval, but I'm still-
Mr. Olick, how about this? We make that the, that it be for approval with design review and a specific request that this be looked at in context of the project at 10 Ruthven. So that in fact, whatever the hiccups are about parking in a public right-of-way, a private right-of-ways, that all those are resolved and that the project be brought to us should there be any need for board final arbiter.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, have a good day.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 108-4674, 10 to 12 Belfort Street. This is to confirm occupancy of an existing two-family dwelling, then convert from a two-family to a three-family. The violation is Article 65, Section 41. Insufficient on-street parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Brendan, good afternoon. This is Brendan Sullivan residing at 220 Commercial Street in Boston. I'm speaking as owner of 10 to 12 Belfort Street. So the plan is to convert from an existing two-family to a three-family. As it sits today, the second and third floor are one combined unit featuring four bedrooms and two bathrooms. This plan would subdivide those two floors to make two two-bedroom, one-bath units. There will be no additional structural changes required. It will just use the existing square footage in the house to create that third unit.
So tell us, what is the proposed, the square footage of those two units?
The first on the second floor is 1,325 square feet. And the second on the third floor is 1,415 square feet.
And these are two-bedroom, two baths? Two-bedroom, two baths?
Two-bedroom, one bath.
One bath, okay. And the first floor is how many square feet?
1,400 square feet even is the first floor.
Okay. Let's see. The violation is the parking. Tell us about the parking situation?
Yes, there's space in the backyard to create parking. However, I would need an easement with 8 Belfort Street to create that parking. I proactively reached out to that owner and proposed splitting the cost to create parking in both of our properties. And that was not something that my neighbor was willing to do at this time. Still something that I would like to do longer term, but I need some cooperation.
Is this already a three-family?
Not, it's three floors, but it is zoned as a two-family still. The prior owner was using it as a three-unit place. So the third floor wasn't in last week's.
I see, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
They're not very complete. There's no elevations. There's no drawing for the third floor. There's extensive drawings for the sprinkler system, but, you know, again, this is not a major project, so.
The part that would be of interest to me is because it has a pitched roof, to understand how much of that the floor unit has adequate floor-to-ceiling heights in there. Because I mean, it looks like it might be a nice-sized unit if it was squared off, but given the pitch of the roof, I'm not sure how much of it is in that, you know, has the adequate ceiling height.
The floor plan, so there's no elevation, so I can't answer the question.
So just speaking as the owner here, there is eight foot throughout that third floor unit. And the pitch of the roof actually is such that there's enough height all the way up to the fourth floor plan. So there's no lower ceiling heights.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Patrick Handel, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. The applicant to appropriate outreach to the abutters via flyer for notification and good outreach to Columbia and Alphatic Association. We don't have any concerns at this time. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Julie Ryan from Council Baker's office. Columbia Seven Health Civic Association voted to support the project, so the council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Karen Foley, Council Savi George's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all. Have a good afternoon.
You too.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 965-182-45 to 45C, Richfield Street. This is to construct four new townhouses on an existing vacant lot. The violation is Article 65, Section 8. The MFR is forbidden in a 2F 6,000 sub-district. Article 65, Section 9. The lot areas insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The lot width is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. Lot frontage is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The floor to area ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9. The building height is excessive in feet. Article 65, Section 9. The front yacht is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9. The side yacht is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9. The rear yacht is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Architect Peter Vanco, 407 Dudley Street in Boston. Thank you so much for hearing us this morning, or this afternoon rather.
So tell us what is being proposed?
Madam Chair, we are proposing a two-unit building. It sounds like the violation list has remained from what it started at 18 months ago. We've undergone a very, very positive public process that has resulted in a reduction of two units. So we started with four.
I'm sorry. Let's just back up. So are you still proposing, so you're proposing two new, two new units? Is it still, is it still in the townhouse style?
It's a similar style, although we had town, no, it's not. It's, they have individual entries, but it's working a little bit more like flats would.
Okay. And now you, with your violations, reducing the density, have any of your violations gone away?
Madam Chair, yes, indeed, they have. MFR was indeed not allowed use in that district. However, we are in a two-family district, so that violation would be gone.
Okay. I know your lot, lot area for additional dwelling unit must have gone away.
That is correct. That is correct. We have an insufficient lot area for the number of units. So it's a 2F 5,000 district, and we only have a 4,500 square-foot lot. So we're 500 feet shy on the ability to do a buy right to family.
Okay. So tell us how your project here is reflective of the neighborhood character and design? I'm looking at, I'm looking at it on Google Maps. It looks like two families absolutely right for the area. But tell me about your approach to the design?
I would agree. I think we wanted to pick up on some of the three-family triple-deckers that do exist. This is one of those neighborhoods in Boston where you have a good mix of gabled buildings and flat-roofed buildings. We think that the flat-roofed buildings clearly provide a bit more usable, regular space for occupants. And the occupant here is, one of those two units is going to be owner-occupied. So we're working hard to get them as much usable space. And we think that from a character standpoint, it really will feel like some of the other flat-roofed triple-deckers in the area.
And how is parking going to be accommodated on-site?
Parking is through two tandem spaces that will be deeded to the units individually. So each unit will get two spaces, but it is tandem. There are four spaces being provided, which is sufficient.
And parking will be off of Richfield or the side street?
Off of the side street. So it actually, that's desirable to the neighborhood, from what we heard. And it's also desirable to the owner. There's a lot less traffic off of the side street.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Drawing's ready.
Any basement occupancy?
Yes, there is. The building raises up to get a daylighted basement. And we have a large courtyard element that actually works off the basement. So we are utilizing some basement square footage there to gain it for unit two.
Oh, goodness. And what is that space going to be used for?
That space is actually living space. And it's shown as such on the drawings that you're looking at.
What is it precisely?
Excuse me?
What is it precisely? What kind of living space?
It is, it's utilized by unit two. It's going to be in the form of two bedrooms and an extended living space or a den. The owner envisions having fairly good-sized families, so wants to have that extension for not only his immediate family, but visiting family.
Mr. Olick, what's your thought?
As Mr. Vanco said, it's raised up enough so that the garden level is, you know, the garden level is a nice euphemism for basement, but the garden, it is, it's, it's okay in terms of underground versus above ground.
And so each unit will have be how many bedrooms?
Yes. So unit one is the, we'll call it the front unit facing Richfield. That is a three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath. Unit two is going to have five bedrooms plus den.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the owner is aware that there cannot be more than four unrelated individuals in a unit?
Madam Chair, that is correct. He is aware.
Okay. So how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
They're okay.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. So I don't have, obviously, the updated information that you guys are looking at, obviously, in our plan, but it's, I just looked at when it was September 15th, it, it has it in the newspaper as four units. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw that. I don't have anything that's updated as far as it's changed.
Okay, thank you. Are the pla, and the plans, Mr. Olick, you're looking at, has the two units?
They're, they're just two units. I, I would be concerned about density if there were four, but two units seems appropriate.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Chantaly Ma Barboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Multiple of our meetings and presentations to the Neighborhood Association were held for this proposal. The applicant received support from Director Butters and the Greater Vote in Geneva Neighborhood Association. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, I'm the City Councilor, Andrea Campbell's office, like to echo the comments of the Mayor's Office and also go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Council of Savi Georgie's office, would like to go on record in support also. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We don't have any letters of support, but we do have one letter of opposition.
And what is that based on?
The character of the neighborhood, density. And I think, obviously, if there were four, maybe, because it's dated today, obviously, I don't know if they got that information.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair? The APDA?
Yes.
As you can see in our recommendation, we recommend to denial because of the density. So that would be our official vote on the record. As for the two units, I don't know if I can really comment on anything whether or not our recommendation would be. However, now that it's gone from four to two, it's a completely different building type. It went from pitched roofs to, now looks like a triple-decker. So I don't know how the board feels about neighborhood context. There were our kind of triple-deckers in that neighborhood, but zoned for two families, there are very few.
Yeah. I, I just, I want to echo, I'm on the Google Street View of this and I, I heard a comment about flat roofs being in the neighborhood, but I'm looking and I see one out of the many houses around.
Right.
So I would, I wouldn't be comfortable unless there was heavy, heavy designer view on this.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have a raised hand.
Yeah, let's listen to the last person. Go ahead.
Hi, you're unmuted. Hi, I'm from Richfield Park and I am also on the Neighborhood Committee.
And what's your name, please? Your name and address?
Linda Sweeney, for Richfield Park.
Okay.
And from my understanding, the house that was going to be built, be built, was going to be similar to the houses next to it. And that design, we have not seen in that design and that design that was presented is totally different and it seems to be not three, four apartments. So I, is going against what we agreed to.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak on this proposal?
Can, can I ask the applicant a question? Mr. Vanco, once you went from four to two and changed the design, was that the new design that we have now in front of us ever presented to the neighbors?
It is, indeed. And that is actually, we have 39 letters of support. I did, did forward those unfortunately late this morning to Ms. Haynes, but those have come, we have 39 letters of support, we have three direct letters.
Okay, you know what, let's hold on, Peter, let's hold on. Is there anybody else to speak on this project, either in support or in opposition? Let's get the testimony on the record.
Nicholas, you're unmuted.
Oh, hi, good afternoon, everyone, and Madam Chair, I'm the owner of 45 Richfield Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being on. Anybody else who does not have a vested interest in this property in, in an ownership sense?
I have a raised hand, but I'm not sure. Ms. Byers, you're, you're muted.
I think I'm sitting on the wrong. I just walked in, I'm, my apologies.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I would still like a simple yes or no question. Is the current proposal being vetted by the neighborhood? Yes or no?
Yes, as supported by the Geneva's Letter of Support.
Okay, so let's get a motion for significant design review with the absolute need for it to reflect neighborhood, the predominant neighborhood character.
Motion to approve a design review for context.
Sarah Snell? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 107-1898, Nine Adams Terrace. This is to change occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. A fire damaged building adding dormers to an existing third-floor unit. Violation is Article 65, Section 41, parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 8, the three-family is forbidden. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Andrew Pollak. I reside at 43 Pleasant Hill Ave. in Mattapan. I am the owner of Nine Adams Terrace, which is on a private way. I was, I bought it in 2015 and I was a resident for three years until 2018. I lived on the first floor. In December of 2019, my second-floor tenant was smoking in the unit, the building burnt down. So what I'm here today proposing is to change, to basically add, keep the same footprint of the building, to add dormers on the third floor, to change it from a two to three, and then to add some living space in the basement. I am also... I'm sorry. You hearing all that?
Yeah, we did hear that.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure. So I'm actually changing, the first and second floor had existing four-bedroom units, one bath. I'm changing those two units to three-bedroom, two baths. And I am changing the third floor, which is, when I bought the building, it was being used as a third-floor unit. It was permitted in the 90s, but never actually zoned as a three-family. And I'm changing that one from a three, or I'm sorry, from keeping three bedrooms and adding a bathroom up there.
Have you been paying taxes as a three-family?
Correct, yes. Actually, the assessor's office after I bought the property changed me in 2017 to a three-family. So my, my assessed value in 2016 was $150,000 less than what it is in 2020. So yes, I, I was assessed as soon as I purchased the building as a three-family.
Okay. And what are the square footages of the units?
Yeah, so the first and second are pretty much the same layout. They're both around 1,400 square feet. And again, it would be a three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,400 square feet. The third floor, which is going to be where existing dormers are added on, made much larger, that is going to be a, about 1,300 square foot unit.
And tell us... Tell us about the living, tell us about the living space in the basement?
Yeah, so that's actually basically going to be used as a family room and, and I actually have plans to possibly move back there and that would be my, my kids' basically playroom. I moved out in the first place because I, I did not have space. My, my family has grown quite a bit and, and I would be using that space down there as basically a toy room.
Okay. Let's see, tell us about the parking. Are you proposing any parking?
So this house is on a, a private way. There's actually six houses on this street and from, for me, living there for many years, I know the Butters very well and I actually put in a support letter from three of my Director Butters who have been...
Can you, can you respond directly to the parking issue?
Sure, sure. Right in the front, I have a spot, heated parking in the front, right next to the porch. You're looking at that right there. And then I have a driveway space right next to it.
Okay. Okay. Let's see what...
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I am, yep.
Hold on. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of the proposal. He did conduct outreach to his neighbors and there were no concerns raised to us.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie Ryan from Speaker, Council Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no raise hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BDA design review.
Is there a second? Grab a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 109-4745, 15 Everett Street. This is a change of occupancy to 75 residential units with 15 parking spots and a sunroom. The violation is Article 69, Section 29. Off-street parking loading requirement, Article 69, Section 8. 75-unit use is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9. Floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 69, Section 9, the use of open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Puljev on behalf of the proponent. With me today is Philippe Saad, who is the team architect together with Charlie Adams from Pendrose Properties. So as their fortune stated, this building is a, the former Williston Barton Rogers Middle School in High Park. The proposal before you is for the adaptive reuse of the building as senior affordable housing. This proposal is in response to a request for proposal issued by DND. The zoning here is 2F 5,000, the lot size is 73,586 square feet. The proposal is to reuse the existing building for 75 units and there'll be five on-site parking spaces with respect to violations, off-street parking.
Sorry, let me just clarify, 75 residential here with five parking spots?
That is correct, Madam Chair. There were updated plans that were submitted to, to the plans reviewer and he had issued a revised refusal letter.
Okay, so let's, let's get to the crux of the matter here. So will there be anybody on-site or will this be purely, purely residential, elderly like residential units?
So it's a senior affordable residential units. There is, through the community process, the developer has provided the community with many benefits, including a cinema. There's 10,000 square feet of space where they can use. We all know about the 54th Regiment in High Park.
Listen, you know, we're looking at it as a change of use from a vacant building to 75 residential units. Whatever's negotiated with the community is separate from us. We need to just look at the merits of the case. So tell us, what is the anticipated size of these units? And tell us, because of a violation is parking and every community cries out for parking spaces after a project has gone in and they realize the impact on the community. So just tell us how these elderly residents will be accommodated in their need for transportation.
Sure. So if you're familiar with this, I'll start with the unit size, it's just because that I below, you brought it up. There's 27, 27 studios, Madam Chair. They range in size from 463 square feet to 606 square feet. 39 one-bedrooms, they raise in size from 722 to 958 square feet. And nine two-bedrooms, and they raise in size from 897 to 1,191 square feet. The, through the Article 8 process to address the parking, initially there was more parking where this is located, it's a block from Clary Square. It's in between the Fimo train and the High Park train. And also working with the city, we're working on licensing as far as parking on the street surrounding this former school building as well.
And so will there be any resident, help for residences or anything there? Or are these five parking spots for the residents of the building, not for support services in any way?
They would be for both, most of it, because of the age of the occupants of this, being senior affordable housing, they limited the parking for that because it was proximity to downtown Clary Square and Logan Square as well as the train stations.
Okay. Any, how are the plans, Mr., I was going to call you Mr. Bizani, but Mr. Pollak?
I don't have my beret on today. The drawings are fine.
Yeah, how, any questions from the board? Is, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal as it accomplishes housing goals for some of our more vulnerable populations. The applicants have worked continuously throughout the community process with neighborhood stakeholders, including the Butters, and we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Caitlin Fleishman here on behalf of Council Royal. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Council of Savi Georgie's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Council Flynn's office. Although this proposal is not in District 2, Council Flynn has sent in a support letter for the board due to the project's focus on affordable senior, senior housing with 74 senior households, specifically aiming to also create a welcoming and safe environment for the LGBTQ plus seniors. However, the project seeks to promote the historical connection between the school and the neighborhood by dedicating a significant portion of the group floor to community use. In addition, the team has committed to creating an office for the... In addition, the team has committed to creating an office for the Massachusetts 54th Volunteering Friends, a nonprofit organization featuring union almin free enactors. Council Flynn applauds the team's commitment to senior housing, inclusion for our LGBTQ plus seniors, and commitment to utilizing the space for community uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody to speak in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, I have at least 10 people, well, 10 people to speak. Raise hands.
Madam Chair, may I speak before the secretary here?
Yes.
Madam Chair, we have 269 letters of support for this project.
Okay.
And we have 11 letters of opposition. And the opposition basically is parking and, you know, density in the community.
Okay. May I hear-
Madam Chairman, we have, I'm Council Liz Breeden's office. Would like to go on record in support.
So you're, so let me just hear from people from the community. May I hear from Tim McCarthy? May I hear from Gretchen Van Ness? Pat Cheney, please.
Tim McCarthy?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tim McCarthy, former Boston City Councilor. I'm a lifelong Hyde Park resident. We started this process many years ago with the Rogers School in Penrose. And the process went as smoothly as I've seen any process go. This is a project that will really help our community, especially the business district area. This is a perfect opportunity with the local theater, with the restaurants, with the YMCA, with the bowling alley for the seniors in our thriving, our community. This is a wonderful project. I really cannot speak in favor anymore than I just did. So I'm really looking forward to the process to continue. And we are eager for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Gretchen Van Ness, please.
Oh yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Gretchen Van Ness, 105 Napont Avenue in Hyde Park. I am here to support of the overwhelming support for this project in the community of Hyde Park. This is a protection of a historic and beloved high school building that is going to be turned into a use that will help revitalize our Main Streets District in Hyde Park. I'm also honored, I joined the Board of LGBTQ Senior Housing because of my enthusiasm and support for this project and have seen how carefully and consistently they have worked with the developer and with the entire community to make sure that this project happens in a way that is knitted into the community, brings benefit to the community, and also serves an incredibly important need, being the only development in all of New England that is LGBTQ welcoming for seniors and affordable seniors. So I'm very excited to speak and support today and look forward to your approval as well of this project.
Thank you. Pat Cheney, please.
Madam Chairwoman and members of the board, I am here to say all the things that everybody has said before me about this building. It checks off all the boxes of everything a neighborhood needs. I live at 38 Milton Avenue. I am a long-term resident. I am a landlord in the business district. I am a business person that works here. And we need the energy, the vitality. We need the density because we need people to come and make my business district busy and happy and alive again. And this is the first development that has come along and offered something to everyone. They're going to beautify the building. They're going to host the LGBT community. They're going to revitalize the business district. And I really feel that it just has to happen and I hope you give it your full support.
Thank you. Ms. Baez?
Thank you to the board and the body. My name is Zinsnel Baez and I am Director of External Affairs for the Office of City Council at Large Julia Mejia. We would like to go on record and offer full support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like everybody who has already spoken to please put your hand down. And I would like to hear from all the calling users. Please leave your hand up if you are a Hyde Park resident. Otherwise, please put your hand down. Okay, so that brings us down to three callers. Please, when you speak, put your name and address on the record and give us new information. Thank you.
Caller, you're unmuted.
Hi, Craig Martin.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for your time, Madam Chair. Certainly, I recognize the support for this project. I'm concerned about one aspect that was presented to the community earlier. And I want to make sure that the board recognizes that this is a bad idea. And that is, because of their parking concerns, they said that they were going to use, work with Department Neighborhood Development to get the municipal parking lot to be used for their cars. That municipal parking lot is needed for the business district. It's full frequently. The library has to use it. Community meetings have to use it. And I don't want Department Neighborhood Development to assign a percentage of the parking lot for this project. They can zone the second tier to that parking lot if they wish, to use it for their tenants. But it's a bad idea to use that municipal parking lot in a signed part of it for this project. Parking, as you know, Madam Chair, is a major concern. Other than that, I recognize that this is a worthy project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. May I have the next caller, please?
Caller, you're unmuted.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty. Council to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no other raised hands.
Excellent.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Real quick, Justin McClery from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. Just want to reiterate the council's support. Don't want to repeat anything that was already said.
Thank you. So, Mr. Pulgin?
I got one question, just-
Yeah, hold on, hold on. Just, Mr. Pulgin? The caller did raise an interesting question because I'm assuming there's the concept of shared parking with that municipal lot. Because of course, parking is essential to a neighborhood business district. And especially if there's a municipal resource like the library in proximity. How is this anticipated to work?
I think I would respectfully have Charlie Adams could speak to that. He's on this call as well and he's the Regional Vice President for Penrose. Thank you very much.
Mr. Adams, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, yes. In terms of the parking, you know, a couple of things I would say. You know, what we said before is that there will not be a major demand for parking based on the fact that it's a senior population and it's a lot of affordable units. In fact, we would like to encourage people to come here without cars and keep them in the community so that they take advantage of the businesses and the opportunities right in the Hyde Park community. I think that's really important, that this area get improved. But because we recognize the fact that there wasn't limited parking that we could put on site just because of the constraints of the site, the fact that this is a historic building and we have to respect not just the building itself, but the entire landscape. So it made it very challenging. We've had an opportunity to work with the city. They've been very helpful in helping to accommodate that. And I believe it's approximately 25 spaces that we've been able to work with the city to add on the street that aren't there previously. So that's our current thought about that. Obviously, the municipal lot is another potential resource that we could use. But at this point, we're looking at the five spaces onsite, on the site itself, and another 25 on the streets around the building, which currently do not have parking now.
Okay, excellent. Given this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Joe. Did you have a question? Forgive me. I knew there was something I had in my brain and then, go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
So, Mr. Pulgin, I'm looking at the aerial view on my Google Maps. It looks like there's a big courtyard in the middle of the building. Is that-
Yeah, that's correct. On the exterior, not right in, not in the middle of the building, but the back, the back, yeah, the back lot is, or actually not a lot, it was the old playground for the school. It's not a lot, it was a playground. That is, that we're renovating, we're landscaping and creating an area for the residents. And the community can enter it as well, you know, under security.
So that, so it's decided through the process to make that green space and not parking?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead with your motion, Joe.
I make a motion to approve.
Shouldn't there have design review, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, they're keeping the-
I don't think there's any exterior walk. Is there any exterior walk proposed?
Madam Chair, in the rear, they're putting a small sunroom, about, I think, 1,800 square feet in the rear to the area where Mr. Rogiro just spoke about.
Okay.
Surrounded by the courtyard.
Okay.
Sure, put design review on it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, boy.
Calling an ex case, calling BOA 10636377A Elliot Street. This is accessibility upgrade, including a new fire stair and a limited use, limited application elevator wheelchair lift. The violation is Article 55, Section 9, and the floor-to-air ratio is excessive in Article 55, Section 9. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
This is John Freeman from Platte Anderson Freeman Architects, Wall Bell Grade Avenue, Bosnianville, Boston. Also, somewhere here should be Katie Swim from the Footlight Theater. I don't know if she's-
Hi, John, I'm here.
You hear Katie?
Yep.
Okay, great. You want to do an introduction and then I'll just quickly show the-
What I'd like to do is, I think a few of us know the Footlight.
Great.
Can you just explain to us exactly, get to the core of the issue and how it's going to be addressed?
Yes, Madam Chair. Simply, we're making the building fully accessible. And we're doing that by, this is the existing plan that you see on the left. And if you keep going down to the next page, we're putting an elevator, a Lula elevator inside. And to do that, we have to have a new egress stair that extends out. And that new egress is the oldest part of the building, new that is in the setbacks. We're also adding a ramp for accessibility. And that's the whole project. If you scroll down to the next page, you can see some-
And everything is off of Elliot Street, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
As I said, it's a diminished project. They're fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the board, Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant received the support from the Jamaica Pond Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The mayor's office would like to go on record and support this proposal.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClery from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley. Our ARFs would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Any raised hands?
Yes, Madam Chair, one. Caller, you're unmuted.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty. Council to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have 10 letters of support, no opposition.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
An ex case, calling BOA 105953436 Red Gate Road. Third floor attic of a single detached residence into a master bedroom suite. New path walking closet. And shed dormer to the rear of the house and minor interior changes to the second floor. The violation is Article 56, Section 8. Only height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello. Can I be heard?
Yes, put your name and address on the record, Mr. Rubenov.
Thank you very much. It's Derek Rubenov from Derek Rubenov Architects. And our address is 82 Spring Street in West Roxbury.
So, Mr. Rubenov, we've been at this for a little while. It sounds like this is a small project. Is this a single-family dwelling?
It is a single-family dwelling and it's-
Okay. And tell us about this. The only violation is the height is excessive in stories. And how does that happen?
That happens because we were proposing to renovate the attic, the existing attic into a master suite, which will change the square footage from being half, a little less than half the square footage of the second floor to a little more than, a bit more than half of the square footage of the second floor. So therefore, it becomes a third story in a two and a half story zone.
Okay. Please, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
The drawings are fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Facy Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. They do have support from the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClery from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. Council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley. Council Savi Georgi's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the secretary here, we have six letters of support, zero opposition.
Madam Chair, no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those, motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Calling an ex case, calling BOA 1093557, 38 to 40 Maplewood Street. This is the demolition of an existing residential structure and erected two-family wood-framed duplex. The violation is Article 56, Section 7, a two-family is divided into a 1F 6,000 sub-district. And Article 50, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
We'll see if you're unmuted.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. I was unable to unmute.
Madam, good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ucho Trabuco, Trabuco Architects, Needham, Massachusetts. As I said, we are seeking relief to erect duplex in a 1F 6,000 zone. Presently, the site is 13,105 square feet. It is occupied by a single-family structure with an ill-law apartment and it's been assessed as a two-family since 2004. What we'd like to do is demolish the house because it's in plastic structural failures all over the place and it needs to be taken down. It's an asset, actually. And again, propose a duplex, which says it's a one-car garage. There's no park in front of the garage. So each unit will have two parking spaces. The first floor, the public area, will have dining area, great room, kitchen, half a bed, and a studio. And then the second floor will have bedrooms and two beds. And the attic will have a recreation area and a bedroom. And a bathroom.
Hold on. Collette, can you please show us the rendering, the street view? Mr. Trabuco, I have to compliment you on the building that's going up on Bell Grade.
Ah.
It is, I haven't seen the finished work, but the design is quite attractive. And different from the square boxes that we have been seeing lately.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. You'll see a better view once the finishes are going on, actually, this coming week.
Oh, good, okay. So this looks like it has, probably have two abutting curb cuts with a roll-down garage?
Yeah, there are two curb cuts existing on the property now as we speak. And basically, we have one curb cut, a nice curb cut to access the garages, which is halfway, you know, into the ground, basically. So it'll be like a split level on the first floor.
And tell us about the feel of the neighborhood. Is it a combination of one and twos?
Yeah, the neighborhood is predominantly a single-family, but there are two-family structures as well as three-family structures. And also down, which is a different zone, but down the street there's a multifamily residence being constructed as we speak.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Mr. Olick, you're fine.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Facy Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The mayor's office does go on record in support of this proposal. They have received support from the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. We have no further concerns at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Council of Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Savi Giorgi's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, like to go on record in support. And for the record, the last case as well, like to go on record in support, 36 Redgate Road.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, no other raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPD, design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 101-4128, 36 Redgate Road. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling, four parking spaces, constructing new rear third-story addition, installing new wheelchair accessible ramp. Violation is Article 51, Section 8, multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 51, Section 8, accessory parking is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, usable space is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address, for the record, please.
Anthony, are you presenting?
No, I am... Hello? Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Matt Appel, Drago Toscano, I'm the applicant. The business address of 11 Beacon Street. With me is Tanya Carrier, the project architect from Colsa Design. Just for a quick point of clarification to start, we have reduced the proposal from office record to the record. We now seek to change the occupancy from a two-family to a four-family with four parking spaces, adding the five families that were still in the building. Also, to renovate the building and complete it in addition. The footprint of the building will remain largely unchanged, although we are seeking to erect and extend it to the front porch, which will provide room for accessible lift, which will allow the one and two to be accessible units. We're proposing to restore the building and retain many of the structure's unique qualities and materials, such as the listed materials. The zoning district of this parcel is 1F 4,000, 1,528 square feet. We are proposing that they are 0.73 with supplies. Now, just to run through the full plans quickly. The lower level will have the lower level of Unit 1, which will contain living space and one bathroom. Then again, this will be designated as space for a future lift, which will be an accessible unit. The first floor will have the upper level of Unit 1, which will contain two bedrooms and one bath. Altoal, this unit will be 1,381 square feet. Here, it will be a studio unit. This will be the second accessible unit, which can be accessed from that lift, and that will be 573 square feet and located at the rear of the first floor. The seventh floor will contain Unit 3, which will be a three-bedroom, two-bath unit, approximately 1,110 square feet. And the third floor will contain Unit 4, which is going to be an 887 square foot, two-bed, two-bath unit. In terms of the violations that were mentioned, this is a three-family district, and we are proposing a four-family, so we'll do the use variance. Lot area for additional dwelling units, 2,000. We have a total of 1,477 square feet. Open space required by 615 square feet for dwelling unit. We're proposing 288 for dwelling unit. And then parking, which is a new two-unit, require 1.75 spaces, a total of 3.5. Currently, there exists two parking spaces. We're proposing four total, but we are adding two additional spaces, but that does fall forward of the three-and-a-half required.
So let's, um, so, can you show us the parking plan, please? This looks like a very attractive house. I'm glad you're maintaining it. And tell us about, so let me look at the parking chart. So actually, you're going to be paving the bulk of the rear lot, which is interesting. And let's just see. So you're having four the driveway and then four spaces right behind it. Tell us also about the occupancy in the basement.
Well, I think the parking as well, Madam Chair. So the right side there is an existing driveway. What we're proposing and working with the community, those back two spaces are going to be designed as a permeable kind of patio slash parking area. So rather than pave it completely, if that parking was ever to not be needed, the community was appreciative of kind of keeping that as a shrapnel favor kind of patio area. So it can kind of be dual purpose. But in terms of occupancy in the basement, that's going to be the lower level of Unit 1. That's where you contain just kind of open living space, the kitchen and one bathroom. And again, there'll be a designated space for a lift, which you can see there on the far left of the screen, which will bring you up to the upper level, which contains the bedrooms. So there'll be both an exterior lift to bring you to the porch, which can bring you directly in from the exit, as you can see there, or you can enter in an interior lift in Unit 1, taking between 1 and 2.
I find it interesting that... How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, as always, the basement raises some questions. As far as I can tell from calculations, it looks like the floor of the basement is four foot eight below grade. And I also just am curious as to the egress. So if the applicant could both talk about the issue of what that means for window height and egress, I'd appreciate it.
So there will be two area ways from the lower level, which provides basically some emergency egress, as well as the interior staircase and future lift that that would be put in. If Tony is available, I would prefer to borrow on the window height.
I'm sorry, what, can you do, call it to me by area ways? And what did you say about the floor, the height of the floor and the bottom of the windowsill?
Yes, this is Tommy Turner. We are, so we are putting in full-size windows, three in the living room with a two-foot-six sill height from the basement, and then two windows in the kitchen, which have a higher sill because they're above the counter.
Okay, and what's the area way?
It's a window well. So we have a three-foot by 10-foot area way.
Oh, okay.
With a emergency ladder.
Okay, it's a fancy word for window well?
Correct, yes, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would go on record in support of this proposal. We conducted a butters meeting back on November 25th, and the applicant went on to the Alston Civic Association. They met with them twice. He also met with the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. From my recollection of the last meeting with the ACA, they were working closely with a direct to butter right next door. They were working on preserving some of those architectural features that, Madam Chair, you mentioned after their presentation. We feel this would be a good addition, you know, updating the existing housing stock on that street. Thank you.
And if somebody else is coming on. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Wayne Yaxton, Counselor Liz Greedens' office, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have four raised hands.
May I have Tony Isadora, please?
Sure. Tony, you're up, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Alston Civic Association. We'd like to go on record in support of this project. The proponents were very good at listening to feedback from members of the ACA and the executive board. This started out as a five-unit project, but downsized to a four-unit project. So we are in approval, and all that we ask is that in the design review, that there be additional emphasis on screening and buffering.
Thank you. Annabelle, please.
Annabelle, you're unmuted.
Okay. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, the other two raised hands, please.
There's a third one. Do you want to hear from him as well? There's three. He can't raise his hand, he said.
Okay, yeah, let's go quickly, please.
Lee Pearls, you're unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lee Pearls. I live at 17 Reedsdale Street. I'd like to go on record and express my support for this project as it keeps the exterior and frontage intact, yet it renovates and improves the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Ms. Lou, you're unmuted.
Yeah, and, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and my name is Lily Liu. I live on the next door called Reedsdale Street. I am in the support of this project and maintaining exterior and also going for the four unit. The only question I have asked is when the project is started, and then it would be nice and just informing us, since we are working from home, so we just kind of need to be working and how to avoid the noise, if we can.
Sounds reasonable.
Carrie Porter, you're unmuted.
Yes, opposition of this. I spoke to a number of the people on the street who are also in opposition. We did not realize it transitioned from a five to a four. The ACA did not give us much notification about the new hearing. One of the concerns is that this company, City Realty, has already been granted 344 units as the Alston Square project, but probably granted another 262 project, which is over 600 units within 500 yards. Plus, you're building another 300 units within 200 yards. I don't know that Alston, or at least this area of Alston, needs more construction going on. I think it takes away from the integrity of this neighborhood. We would like to see maybe some consideration in reduction of the variances. The ZBA does not have an obligation to grant variances, but rather the opposite. So this company has been granted so many variances already. You know, we'd like to maintain this neighborhood. It's the only street that has three of 10 owner-occupied houses. Most of that part of Alston, which is where I live, it's only a 2% owner-occupied. So I just think that this is not good for the neighborhood. You know, again, what they're trying to do is great, but it is a three-family, 4,000. They could do a lot within that without asking for variances.
And did you put your address on the record?
My address is 80 Linden, and I'm also a renter at 11 Reedsdale.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Ms. Ambassador?
Madam Chair, that's it.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is a quick question. Why did this come in as Bank C and not City Realty?
Madam Chair, that's what the property is structured under. It's held by an LLC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 107-1309, 13 Greylock Road. This is seeking to change an occupancy of an existing single-family residential dwelling to a four-family residential dwelling with five parking spaces. Also, renovate, including rear and side additions and dormers. The violation is Article 51, Section 8, four-family uses forbidden. Article 51, Section 9.4, dimension and location of the main entrance for Unit 1 and 2. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9, floor ratio is excessive. Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 51, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address, for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drego with Drego and Toscano with an address at 11 Beacon Street, representing the petitioner. I also have Tanya Carrier from Colsa Design as the architect of the project.
So, Counselor, right off the bat, I'm looking at it, and it looks like another City Realty project?
Yes. This project, Madam Chair, was here before the board back in February. We were denied without prejudice. One of our units were undersized, and since then, we've also worked with our neighbors in a butters. So we've reduced the unit count on this project. It will include five, four units instead of the five when we were here before.
What's the zoning district?
This is a 2F district, although we have multifamily all around us to the left apartment complex and in the back. We are, this is, we are in a 2F 5,000. We are, since the last time we were here, we've made a number of changes to this project based on feedback that we had heard from the board and neighbors. We've reduced our FAR from 0.91.
So, Counselor, you've heard me say this enough. Don't tell me about the reduction. Tell me base code to what you're proposing to do. Okay?
I will go over the unit count with you, Madam Chair. We have, just to go over each floor, two of the units are duplex units. Unit 1, which has a lower level, is 1,096 square foot, two-bedroom, one-bath. The lower level would have kitchen, living space, and then there's an upper level on the first floor. The main entrance, that unit is handicap accessible. The main entrance is on the left side of the building. Unit 2 is also a bi-level unit. That's a 1,353 square foot bi-level unit with two bedrooms and one bath. And again, that is a handicap accessible unit in on the left-hand side of the building. Unit 3 on the second floor is a 1,223 square foot, three-bed, two-bath with kitchen, living space. And then finally, Unit 4 is 1,053 square foot, two-bed, two-bath with kitchen.
Are these anticipated to be condos?
These would be proposed rental units.
So, you know, this is just so similar to Reedsdale Street. Just, you know, I think somebody who spoke on the previous project raised a pretty interesting question. You know, how many, how many projects has City Realty proposed and gotten approval for in Alston-Brighton? And how many, and how many of them needed Board of Appeal intervention to get to the numbers that they so desired?
Madam Chair, I don't have that information in front of me. I know we are here quite often. They also own units that do not require Board of Appeal relief. In this case, most of the buildings around us, there's a mix. There's apartment style, and they all go back further. So we wanted to add this addition.
One of the things I do want to figure out how we get the message across very clearly is that basement space is not something that we're absolutely thrilled about. And I saw it on Reedsdale Road, and I'm seeing it on this one, and I figure that the argument is that it's to be handicapped accessible. But I just want to make sure that the message goes across to City Realty, that we, as a board, are not big fans of living space in the basement. Okay? Just so that, and Colsa, you guys are on this call, so I need you guys to get that message so that we do not continue seeing... message so that we do not continue seeing living space in the basement, especially the ones that, especially in the neighborhood, that's already pretty dense. Please go ahead and tell us how the parking is going to work in this space.
Yes, Madam Chair, there is an existing curb cut. If you look on the left side of the building, that's a good picture right there. So we are adding additional spaces as you go down to the back. There's five spaces. We do still have a patio area and some green space, but we have all the five in the regalia of the property.
Okay. Okay. Any, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay. It's, you know, it's an improvement over what I think we all considered to be undersized units last time they came before the board. This works better. Now, leave it at that.
And does it, in fact, show four residential units? Because this, that, the sheet that's up on the screen still calls a three-family.
Yeah, no, it's four units.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. As you heard from the applicant, they were before the board previously. They went back and worked with the Austin Civic Association. They worked with neighbors and director butters as well and addressed a number of concerns those butters had with the existing tenants and with the proposed plans. We feel they made adequate changes during this community process. We'd like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Wayne Yeh from Counselor Breeden's office. We echo the concerns of the chair, but would like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi Georgie's office. Would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's seven raised hands.
Okay, may I hear from, is Tony Disidoro on? So, yes, please, Tony, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association, who would like to echo the comments of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and like to go on record and support.
Thank you. And let's hear from Connie and Sean, please.
Connie?
Hi. My name is Connie Ballademas. I own 15 Greylock Road, which is the building directly abutting 13 Greylock. I am in support of this project. We have been working with Jacob and others. They've put up a fence in between the property. We've resolved the issues of parking in our lot or trash, so it's been a good relationship since then, and I am in support of it.
Thank you.
Sean, you're unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sean Packard here, 370 Chestnut Hill Ave. I'm a local resident and employee in the area. I do like the changes that have been made to the design, and I'd like to go on the record and full support of the project.
Thank you. Will everybody else put your hands down except 1, if you are a director butter, and 2, if you're in opposition? Need to hear from those two. Anybody who's absolutely director butter, and 2, if you're in opposition. Okay, let's, so we heard from Sean. May I hear from Justin, please?
Hi, my name is Justin Affron. I live at 11 Price, which is directly behind 13 Greylock, and I would like to go on the record in support of this project.
Okay. Thank you. May I have the two calling users?
Call you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Andrew. I didn't know how to unraise my hand. I live at 26 Tremont. Work in the Austin-Brighton area. Based on the layouts I've seen and heard, I believe unit size you're asking for this building is adequate and conforms with the area, so I support this project.
Call you're unmuted.
Hi, this is Joe Kennedy, a local resident at 358 Chestnut Hill Ave. Also, just didn't know how to put my hand down. I am in support of this project, and I agree that the changes made to the plans seem to be sufficient enough. I feel like it...
Thank you. May I hear from Lee Pearls again, please?
Hi, Lee, you're unmuted. Lee, you're unmuted.
Okay, Ms. Ambassador, can you put, mute everybody and just, we're going to get to the motion? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPD design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
On the last case for 1 o'clock, calling BOA 109, well, I'm sorry, we still have interpretations and iteration. The last case for BOA 1009, 6134, 102, 104, Litchfield Street. This is to convert an existing two-family into a three-family, single unit on the first floor, and two-bedroom apartments on the second. Fully replace walls, roof, second floor up. Basement work is limited to the change of use R3 to R2. Violation is Article 51, Section 9. The lot area is insufficient. Article 51, Section 9. The front yard is insufficient. And Article 51, Section 9. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Lori Suave. I'm with Bella Suave Architects at 272 School Street in Waltham.
So please tell us what's being proposed.
Hi, yes, my clients, the homeowners, Jim, sorry, Tim and Jane McCall, they've been living in this house for over 40 years, and they're active members of the community. And now that their children are grown, they'd like to renovate their existing duplex to allow for an aging-in-place single-story on the first floor and include two units on the, two separate units on the second floor. So we are looking for three areas of variance relief. And the first is to go from the two-family to the, to a three-family, which it is in a three-family district. The second one is the vertical addition on the rear, which the code, the zoning requires 20-foot setback. The current, I'm sorry, 40-foot, and the current is a 20.2-foot setback, and we're proposing to add a second floor. There's a second floor now, but we're proposing to put it back to where the existing is. So we're looking for a non-conforming vertical extension. And then the third variance relief is to the, just at the front of the house, there's an existing dormer on the second floor, and the vestibule at the entry both have flat shed roofs, and we'd like to change those, keeping the shed and the vestibule exactly the way it is, but changing those to a gable roof to be more in the vernacular of the neighborhood homes.
Okay, and tell us about the sizes of the unit?
So the first-floor unit, everything will be within the exact footprint. So that, like I said, it'll be one single aging-in-place on the first floor. And that's a two-bedroom unit.
And the number, and the square footage, again?
The square footage for the first floor is 1,636 square feet, and that will remain the same.
Okay. And the other two?
And so the second floor, the existing is 1,067 square feet, and we're proposing expanding that to 1,489 square feet.
Okay.
So it's, that's over the first floor, but we're bringing the back addition, a little deck back five feet, so the roof plane is actually back five feet.
At the third unit?
So they're both the same on the second floor. There's one on either side of the building. So if you go to the next sheet, you'll see the, yeah, so the next one is just, and then, and then on those, so those are cathedral ceilings, and then what we're looking at is the loft level. It's just basically two, like, den or office-size open rooms within those units.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich? I mean, I can't tell, so like, if this building is, maybe the architect can answer this. I know the building form on Litchfield, but I can't tell how far, if that rear addition and the back of it is going to shade off your neighbors and their, their access and enjoy the property.
What's that, Harvey, Mike?
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure who is speaking.
Okay, so let's hear from you.
Yeah, so we looked at that, and we have, as a, right, we could build up to 35, even if we go all the way back. So we were looking at just only going up to the 32.6, and the owner next door did request a solar study because of that concern, and so the owner did provide two solar studies. And again, that's another reason why we're pulling back the rear on the, above that second story. Instead of bringing it all the way up, we're bringing it back five foot six. So actually, if you go, keep going down to A1, you can see, and there's a couple of perspectives where you'll be able to see.
I'm sorry, was it A1?
A1.
Or two? Ms. Ambassador, can you mute everybody, please?
Okay, thanks. Oh, and let me know. Thanks, bye.
Can we mute everybody and just have the architect on?
Everyone's muted.
I have muted definitely.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Yeah, it's all, the drawings are okay.
Any questions from the board?
I don't understand much.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would go on record and support this proposal. We conducted a butters meeting on July 20th, and afterwards, the applicant went on to work with the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association and the Austin Civic Association, where they received support from both. They worked closely, as they mentioned, with that neighborhood had concerns regarding shadowing, and they've also, you know, just worked, you know, they're long-term residents. We're looking forward, from the Mayor's Office standpoint, to having more residents take this option of aging in place and staying in the city. We think this is a great opportunity for Brighton. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Wayne Yeh from Counselor Breeden's office would like to go on record and support in the objective of aging in place. Thank you.
Karen?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi Georgie's office would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony?
The board, Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomez from the Brighton-Austin Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. I'd like to, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPD design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The board will take a 10-minute break and will resume at 3 o'clock. I want to just make a statement for anybody who is on for Bremen Street, that please, in the time that, the 10 minutes that we have off, please make sure that you organize yourselves, because I will be hearing only from, besides elected officials, only four people in support and only four people in opposition. So please make sure that you give a note to Ms. Ambassador, Alicia Miller, to tell her who's going to be speaking in support and opposition. Only four people. The rest of you can, of course, be online, can be part of this, but I will only hear from four people on either side. Okay? Thank you. We are the next case we're gonna hear is the interpretation for one o'clock. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna call the one o'clock interpretation, case BOA one zero nine zero three six five seventy three Sheridan Street. The the petitioner seeks a determination that the Inspection Service Department aided in issuing a permit. The permit was issued as an allowed use. Name and address for the record, please.
I'd like to hear from the person who put in the appeal, Dr. King. And I think there were two of you on that appeal. Dr. King and Mary Wiseman, please let me know that you are here or that you are represented by somebody and who it is who's representing you. Once more, is Dr. King or Ms. Wiseman on this call? And whoever the attorney is, please put yourself on the record.
Madam Chair, the the appellants are represented by Attorney Brian Wells. I see him in the attendee list. If we could make him a participant, or I'm sorry, a panelist.
Okay.
We could be able to hear from him.
Okay.
Yes, this is Mary Wiseman. If you can hear me, Brian Wells will speak for us.
Okay. Mr. Wells, can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Yes, it's Brian Wells. And my address is one twelve Water Street. O two one zero nine.
And is there anybody here representing? Is the owner here for seventy three Sheridan? Or somebody representing the owner at seventy three Sheridan?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Don Wees, counsel for the Appellate Watermark Development. That's the proponent of the
Okay.
Lee Goodman, who is a principal of Watermark.
Uh, Lee Goodman, okay. Um, and let's see, is anybody, will anybody speaking be speaking on behalf of ISD?
Madam Chair, Mark Joseph and Mark, you're unmuted.
Yes, I'm yes, I'm here. On behalf of ISD, I'd be speaking on behalf of ISD, Mark Joseph, an examiner.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please stop. Ms. Ayesha, can you just make sure everybody is muted? I just want to hear from Mr. Wells. Mr. Wells, please, can you go on the record making your case about why why you seek this determination?
Yeah, and I don't know why my camera's not working. I don't know if I have that ability, excuse me. But thank you, Madam Chair. Jill, I I don't, you sent in a brief which incorporate into the record. I'm sure you, I believe you received a copy. If not, please let me know so we can arrange that to get that to you. We're here, I'm here, and all the direct butters have joined this brief. It's on the left and the right have joined this objection, basically. We're asking you to invalidate the permit. Because ISD issued a permit for an eight unit apartment building, a residential building in a three family district, a sub district, which is in violation of multiple provisions. And I'm not sure how it got through. They their plans called it an eight unit residential building. And according to Article fifty five, if you looked at the first section in Table E, it states that any structure or combination of structures, including townhouses or row houses, or however you put them together, the limit is three dwelling houses. And they have eight dwelling houses and this one big structure, they might try to contend it's three little structures combined attached as townhouses. And that is is it shouldn't have been passed. It shouldn't have been approved. It should have gone through the variance process. Eight units aren't allowed in three family districts.
Okay, and can you please, for the record, tell us who exactly it is you're representing and their addresses, please?
Yeah, well, it's incorporated and I can get my my Dr. King and Mary Wiseman at forty five Cranston Street. And then Atlanta Hale at, I believe it's this store, forty or fifty, forty nine. If you have my brief, it's their signatures are on there at the end and it's listed there. It may be easier.
Yes, how many, how many people? I just, I just need to make sure that I have things on the record. So how many people have joined in on this brief?
Six.
Six, six, six addresses.
That's right.
Okay.
Four addresses, six people, excuse me. Five addresses, six people.
Six people, okay. And then basically, the contention is that this permit should not have been issued as of right as it proposes a three family, eight, it proposes eight families, multifamily dwelling in a three family residential district. Okay, thank you.
That's right.
Mr. Weest, as the representative of Watermark, can you please give us your your perspective?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is no limit in the zoning code on how many dwellings can be placed on a lot. That is just dependent on the size of the lot, the lot area required per dwelling unit and the lot area required per additional dwelling unit. If you look at Code Section fifty five dash seven point three, which defines the three family residential subdistricts, one of which we are in, it states that in a three F subdistrict, the maximum number of dwelling units allowed in a single building, including a townhouse building, row house building, is three. So that's a limit on units per building. It's not a limit on buildings per lot. This is a district that allows townhouses and row houses. You may have up to three units in each building. And how many townhouses or row houses can fit on a lot is just dependent on lot area.
Okay, and is there anything, because when there are two or more buildings, separate buildings proposed on a lot, generally, that is, that triggers a violation of more than one building on a lot. And that is true, for example, when we see the anticipation or the hopes or the conversion of a carriage house into a separate unit or separate dwelling, dwelling space. Is there anything like that in the code?
Madam Chair, you raise a good point, and there are two issues here. One is conversion of a carriage house often triggers the need for zoning relief because a dwelling to the rear of another dwelling typically requires relief. That provision is in the code to avoid so-called pork chop or flag lots. The other provision you referred to, I actually worked on when I was at the B R A, working for Rick Shacklick, close to twenty years ago. And there was concern about multiple dwellings side by side in the lot. The code was amended to ensure that if you put two dwellings side by side on a lot, two or more dwellings, that the intervening side lots were required in full for each building. In other words, if there's a five foot side lot requirement, you couldn't put two dwellings on the same lot only five feet apart. You had to meet the full side lot requirement for each dwelling. So each one would have five feet or they'd be ten feet apart. The side lot requirement is not applicable for row houses or townhouses. These are buildings that share party walls. There are separate buildings under the code. We have three separate buildings here. Two of those buildings have three units in them. One of the buildings has two units in it. These party wall buildings are allowed with no intervening side yards per Article fifty five.
Madam Chairman, may I real quickly?
Oh, no, 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 please, okay. And you are meeting all other requirements of height, parking, and distance from from the lock lines.
That's correct, Madam Chair. And before the project was filed, Doug Anderson, who was a former plan exam and reviewed the project. I reviewed it. We worked very closely with the architects on this. And that was reviewed by Luis Santana at ISD. It's had a lot of careful review.
Okay. May I hear from Mr. Joseph from ISD?
And it's townhouses. Each town is one building. Each building can have three different units based on the size of the lot. The lot is about nineteen thousand four hundred seventy four square feet. If you get enough for each unit, I believe the buildings was properly reviewed and issued a permit by Mr. Santana.
And are townhouses, row houses allowed in a three F subdistrict? I don't know if it's three F five thousand, what it is specifically in a three F district in Jamaica Plain.
Yes, Madam Chair, three F five thousand town, or this townhouse building is allowed.
Okay, and it's and it's allowed regardless of whether it meets the three, the three unit count. Okay.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
The dimensional requirements must be met. In that case, each building, the requirements have met.
Okay, Mr. Wells, is there anything you'd like to put on the record?
Yes, I would. I'd like to put on the record the part of the zoning code that I think my colleagues have overlooked. It says, in a three F subdistrict, the maximum number of dwelling units allowed in any combination of semi-attached or attached structures, including townhouses or row houses, shall be three. So it doesn't matter that they combine them. This wasn't talked in this provision.
And I
First section.
Are you, are you referring to Article two A? Or are you referring to Article, I think this was fifty five? Are you referring to fifty five?
It's chapter fifty five. It's the first section under Table E.
Okay.
In the fifty five nine.
Well, the table, the table that covers that is Table A, not Table E.
Table A covers the uses.
A, that's right. A covers uses, E covers dimension. Okay, okay, so I will, what is today? Today is the today is the sixth. I would request that everybody provide any information that you need to provide in writing to the Board of Appeal Office by the sixteenth. And please, can I have a motion to refer this to the Law Department?
Madam Chair, Justin McClair from City Council, Matt O'Malley's office. Would you like the councilors' offices to supply their testimony in writing as well, or?
No, no, this is, this is purely a technical discussion. And therefore, we need a technical analysis, but thank you for the offer, Justin. Okay, so from the board members, may I have a motion for referral to to the Law Department?
Motion to refer to law. Legal.
Second, turn around.
Legal. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I call the reconsideration?
Yes, please.
This is case BOA B one zero two nine seven seven two, two eighty two to three oh eight Bremen Street. The request for reconsideration pursuant to Article five dash three of the board's seven twenty one twenty decision to deny the requested relief to erect a new five story, one hundred and forty five unit residential building with ground floor retail, art studio, art gallery, and community space, and at gray parking. Violations were Article twenty seven T dash five, this was in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty three, section eight, an art studio use is forbidden. Article fifty three, section eight, the art gallery use was forbidden. Article fifty three, section eight, a local retail use was forbidden. Article fifty three, section eight, the restaurant use was forbidden. Article fifty three, section eight, the takeout restaurant use was forbidden. Article fifty three, section eight, the multifamily dwelling use was forbidden. Article fifty three, section nine, the additional lot area was insufficient. Article fifty three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio was excessive. Article fifty three, section nine, the building height was excessive in stories. Article fifty three, section nine, the building height was excessive. Article fifty three, section nine, the usable open space was insufficient. Article fifty three, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty three, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
So this is, this is what's going to happen. I'm going to hear this as if it's, I'm going to hear from the applicant's representative. I am going to hear from elected officials. First, elected officials and representatives. I would like to put every, I would like to have everybody put on the record their reason for support or opposition. After I've heard from those, I'd like to hear from the BPDA. Representative from the BPDA. And finally, we'll get, finally, we'll get testimony from four members in support and anybody who's in opposition. So who is representing the applicant? Is that Mr. Linz?
No, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Hanley.
Oh, Joe, please put your name and address on the record.
Madam Chair, can you hear us? This is
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, Madam Chair, we're having technical difficulties over here. Give us one second.
Nick, you're connected to two different devices. Like, that's what we have the
What? It's just the exit, no? Just exit. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I think we're both locked in here in the conference room. But for the record, it's Attorney Joe Hanley from McTernan, Colton Miller, twenty eight State Street in Boston. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this request for reconsideration. Would you like me to present, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Ambassador, I know we sent a very brief, one page slide that I can go through very quickly. Madam Chair, if I may, we submitted a letter requesting this reconsideration dated
So, 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 Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
I don't know why it's echoey, but Mr. Hanley just saw through the project and tell us what you're proposing and what the violations are.
So they're connected to two different devices, Madam Chair, in the same room. That's why you hear the echo?
Oh, okay.
So Nick, either Joe or Joe are gonna have to disconnect from one of your devices.
Can you guys share?
Madam Chair, I think we're, we've now locked all devices. I'm just, I happen to be on Attorney Suzula's device. Can you hear me now?
Yes, and we can see.
Just a question of clarification. Do you want me to speak to the nature of the hearing, meaning the request for reconsideration? Or would you like to have a presentation on this project again?
I'd like to have a brief presentation on the project because it has been a few months since it's been in our brains.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so we had submitted for the July twenty first virtual hearing a complete packet of information, including our supportive memorandum for the basis of relief. This is a, this is an industrial automotive site in the residential district in East Boston.
And what is, what is the zoning district?
So it's a three F two thousand zone. But the lot is a approximately thirty four thousand square feet. It includes two automotive uses and a small multifamily use directly across from the Bremen Street Park, which is a seventeen acre vast park, and directly across from the MBTA's airport train station. The existing use is, uses are nonconforming, especially their structures as well. The existing use is, uses are non-conforming, especially their structures as well. This is also at the intersection of a pretty busy area, Brook Street and Bremen Street. So we started, this is a Article 80 large project. It's approximately a hundred and ten thousand gross square feet on four levels, stepping up to five levels. We had a very robust and extensive Article 80 process, which began in the fall of 2019. We had an IAG of thirteen members, eight of whom submitted letters of unconditional support and one of conditional support with some concern about the height. Major benefits to this this project, 145 units.
Okay, I, I, okay, so this is a 3F 2,000 district. You're proposing 145 units, five-story building with a combination of retail, art studio, gallery, community space, space uses in a district by the zoning that says it should be primarily, if not solely, residential. So now that you're going through all these uses, can you talk through the, um, the forbidden uses that you're proposing in this district?
The multifamily use is, um, is, is a, is a variance. Multifamily in the 3F, again, it's not utilized as a 3F at this point. Also, the conditional use for the restaurant and takeout use on the ground floor.
The violations that I have in front of me, list restaurant, takeout, multifamily dwelling, art gallery, art studio uses, all as forbidden uses. Um, so, so I do need to go by the violations. So I'm just gonna just do a straight out and assume that these are all forbidden uses. So tell us the square footage and the components of these uses.
Um, ground floor retail cafe use is a thirty-two hundred square feet. Um, and that's something that through the BPDA process and the community process, we were asked to add and increase through the Mayor's Office of Emerging Industries and the BPDA. They consider this area to be a bit of a food desert. And so we willingly agreed to do that as part of a DPIR scoping of this project. That's the cafe use. Next to that is a first-of-its-kind artist workshop gallery, which is intended to enliven the street and is available and dedicated to artists of the building. So that's approximately twenty-one hundred square feet of workshop space. As you go above that, there are thirteen, um, income-restricted artist units that are directly above the workshop and the gallery. And the remainder of the building on the upper level are apartments. We have twenty-one income-restricted total units, which is in excess of the inclusionary development policy, which would normally require nineteen.
So is this, is this twenty-one plus thirteen of artists units?
No, ma'am, the thirteen artist live units, which are directly above the workshop, are part of the twenty-one. So it's a true mixed income, mixed use. And the artist community that we're creating here is really, uh, you know, the, it's, it's actually the biggest in East Boston and would serve, you know, meet a huge need in a time that affordable artist space, not just to live, but with...
So, Councilor, I will tell you a fact, we've received, and we have received a slew of letters. So we are kind of, we know about that piece of, the, 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 um, the outreach that has been made to us for the artist space. So tell us now about the breakdown of those residential units. The, the, the number and the square footage and the, and the unit type.
So, um, we have, um, of the units in the building. I have Ruthie Coleman from Rhodey Architects who can give you the specifics on that. And she's on the line, Ruthie.
Hi, thanks, Joe. Hi, Madam Chair, Ruthie Coleman, Rhodey Architects, 55 Albany Street. So we have 145 units in the building. Of that, forty-three percent, which would be sixty-three units, are one bedrooms. And those range from six hundred twenty-five to seven hundred square feet. Forty-four percent in sixty-four units are studios. Those range from four fifty to five hundred square feet. And thirteen percent of eighteen units are two bedrooms, ranging nine hundred to nine fifty square feet.
Okay, and then how many parking spaces are you providing?
Sixty-one parking spaces.
Okay, and is there a reason why there are, there are no three-bedroom family units in this, in this proposed project?
So, um, we have a series of two-bedroom units that are intended to kind of capture that middle market. And also with the introduction of the artist space, um, you know, that sort of is how the breakup was determined based on the extensive process with the BPDA and the affordability component as appropriate, especially for this location, um, you know, close by to transportation.
So families, family units close to transportation.
No, but, um, we, we looked at, we actually added two-bedroom units. As you know, families are, include, uh, you know, couples as well as folks that are, you know, would rent these two-bedroom units. So that was a huge component of, uh, you know, the mix of, of units that we have is not just based on the residential, but it's also considering the artists and considering the workshop space and considering the retail space.
Okay. So, Mr. Olick, um, I know you had comments on the plans before. Uh, and can you refresh our memory and perhaps if you remember what they were? Mr. Olick, are you on?
Yeah.
Now I can.
Yeah, I think I must have been muted. I was gonna just ask Mr. Hanley to, uh, to revisit that discussion that we had.
I'm sorry, Mr. Olick, now this also, we had a discussion about subleasing some of the units, is that correct?
That was part of it, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we had an opportunity and, you know, the developer had an opportunity to look at that. And we're proposing to restrict subleases as part of our, as part of our lease leasing and management of the building. And to limit it to, you know, only special circumstances and for at least one year, which is essentially a lease.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I, I guess what I'm suggesting is, you know, we know the, the, the plans and the project in fair amount of detail. And it now is back for reconsideration. So I guess when I, maybe I should ask it a different way. What are the, what are the changes that you are proposing today that are different from what you proposed in July that would, uh, that would prompt us to reconsider?
So, uh, consistent with the housing policy, the 2030 policy, which I know you actually worked on as a member, as an advisory member, we're proposing to increase the onsite affordability to seventeen percent. And we have had, uh, not just discussions, but meetings and progress with the BPDA to record and make that change. We've also, uh, submitted information and, and my mistake, if I thought the discussion was about why we're asking for reconsideration, um, was, you know, based on the discussion that was not perhaps complete based on the July 21st hearing.
Mr. Hanley, what is the park across the street?
It's called the Bremen Street Community Park. And it is, has custodial ownership from the City of Boston as well as from Massport. And it is a vast part of our pretty robust BPDA, um, benefits program is a monetary contribution. We're providing over two hundred thousand in, um, in-kind and monetary contributions outside of the product, project, including a component to support maintenance and upkeep for the park and to make real substantial sidewalk, public realm, and pedestrian and vehicle safety measures along Bremen Street.
And will the residents of this building be paying the equivalent of a window tax? Because the, looks like the building is around predominantly three-family or three triple-decker, equivalent of triple deckers, and you're proposing five stories. Will the residents on the two additional stories be paying a window tax? The equivalent of a window tax for the, for the benefit of a public resources, of access, visual access to a public resource?
That, if look at the design of the project, um, the ends of the building are actually four stories. And they're intended to stitch into that three and four-story surrounding neighborhood. We're, of course, a, not a 3F property. We are a vast corner lot of thirty-four thousand gross square feet.
Okay.
Which are also affordable, um, and...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just not moved by this affordable thing for such a large, such a large development. Any questions from the board?
Sure, Madam Chair, Ed DeVoe. Attorney Hanley, if you could, just so I have some clarification. You had mentioned that you would be funding maintenance and keeping alike for Bremen Street Park. My understanding is that a, a vast amount of that is done through Massport. I think there's maybe some clarification as to, you know, who is responsible for funding and maintenance and upkeep. Because it struck me as present as the City of Boston is handling that, which I do not believe to be the case.
So if you look at our, uh, thank you for that question. If you look at our board memorandum for the BPDA's approval, we are obligated to a $25,000 contribution, which is being paid to Boston Parks and Recreation for maintenance and upgrades. And that is something that was heavily negotiated with the BPDA in addition to, of course, many other aspects of funding. There's a portion of that, you're...
You know, I understand the difference between a BPDA Article 80 process, where there are, you know, quote, "community benefits." But I have to say, from our perspective, we need to look at, at it on a technical ground because we were not privy to any of those negotiations, you know. And so we want to look at it, I think, purely from a technical perspective. Because, you know, that, that is all we're presented with is, is technical facts and, and the violations that, that this project has triggered. Let me just ask, any more questions from the board?
I, I have a question.
Yes, please.
By my, besides the height and density of the project, is any consideration at any point ever given? Like, I understand you can, you're improving sidewalks and, and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, you're putting, you're putting in a lot of units and we're relying on public space, sidewalks, parking space, for pickups, drop-offs, and all of that. Was there any, ever any consideration given to getting those vehicles off Bremen Street, which is a very congested, very crowded street, and giving someplace on the thirty thousand square feet of property that you folks own for deliveries to your residences upstairs? Like, was, was that a conversation? Because...
So, that's, thank you for that question, Mr. Rogiro. So in this instance, we actually, because of that concern, we were able to create onsite loading and receiving into, as you said, that thirty-four thousand square foot site. If you look at the plans, we are taking, there will be no loading or receiving on the street. We're also creating two spaces on, at the front along Bremen Street for Uber and Lyft and the like, as well as creating a car share program, not just for the building, but on that expanded sidewalk area. The other thing I'll say that, that does relate to the park is, you know, how do the neighbors get to the park safely? How do you get a car off Bremen Street? And this isn't just for our, the residents of our building. We are lifting and so-called tabling the intersection between Brooks and Bremen. As you know, that's a very busy street and that will slow down traffic, but more importantly, create safe passage and a better environment for people of East Boston to go and utilize the park and come back and forth from the neighborhood to the train station and the like. So thank you for that question. Yeah, that was a big, big component of, uh, of the work that we did.
And Joe, if I can also add on, closing a large number of curb cuts along the existing site. So those curb cut closures are what are adding additional parking on the street, providing the drop-off zones and allowing us to bump out the sidewalk for that safety connection and rave crossing at Brooks and Bremen.
Madam Chair, let me ask a question. This is supposed to be a reconsideration, meaning now in October, we're supposed to reconsider a decision that was made in July. I'm a little frustrated because all I would like, that's what I asked for before, is a series of bullets, not long explanations, a series of bullets of things that are different in October than they were in July that would prompt us to reconsider.
Mr. Olick, Mr. Olick, nothing in substance has changed on this.
But I would just...
Everybody, um, that, in fact, um, the, uh, the fact of the matter is, Mr. Hanley, I think in his, um, request for reconsideration, uh, mentioned most, most specifically that we did not hear from the BPDA on, um, at, at our last hearing.
If I may, Mr. Olick, because, you know, there's a lot at stake here for the community and there's a lot at stake for the city. This is a transformative, community-based development. At the July hearing, we were one of the first hearings, Article 80 hearings, in, under this new virtual world. The BPDA's representative for a $60 million project was asked to provide testimony and couldn't be, uh, couldn't be connected to. I was muted during the, the public comment period. That's not to say I'm entitled to rebuttal, but I ought to be able to ask for one. And more concerning, this board made a decision, or at least the basis of opposition, was on a petition that someone forged people's names to and falsified them. You have folks that are testifying today and who wrote emails to you, Madam Chair, saying, "My name is Miss Burton on a document. I did not oppose this. I support this." That is not the kind of process that is going to help this city and this neighborhood create housing and artist opportunities. It's unfair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hanley, you didn't, you, you just need to hold your horses right there, okay? What I need to know is... Lo que necesito saber es, ¿hay algún comentario adicional o preguntas del board? Okay, ahora me gustaría escuchar si hay algunos funcionarios electos en esta llamada. Por favor, coloque su nombre y dirección en la nota y nos diga si apoya o no nuestra oposición.
Señoras y señores, miembros del board, Lina Tramelli con el Office of Neighborhood Services. Me gustaría decir que el Office of Neighborhood Services apoya la reconsideración, pero nuestra posición no ha cambiado y nos oponemos al propósito, basado en el feedback de Lea Barres y de los miembros de la ciudad también. Hay muchos problemas respecto a la densidad y escala del proyecto, el número de unidades, no hay suficiente parque. También va a haber mucho impacto y congestión en un área muy ocupada. La tamaño de las unidades, estudios y cuartos no van a traer a las familias de la ciudad y no acogemos los necesidades de la ciudad que principalmente se compone por familias. Así que recibimos una petición de oposición y en estos días también recibimos llamadas y emails de oposición de la directiva Tabares, así como muchas cartas de oposición de los residentes de Eagle Hill, así como la representante estatal Adrian Madaro está oponiendo a este proyecto y la Asociación Civica de Eagle Hill está en oposición a esta propuesta. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguien más, otros funcionarios electos para hablar sobre esto? ¿Alguien aquí de la Cámara de Representantes, la oficina de la Cámara de Representantes Edwards?
Sí, Madam presidenta, gracias. Buenas tardes, Ricardo Patrón del Office de la Cámara de Representantes, Lidia Edwards. La Cámara de Representantes me gustaría dejar el solicitud de reconsideración a la disposición del board. Nuestra comprensión es que si ese solicitud fuera exitoso, el proyecto sería puesto en un futuro agenda del PPDA para discusión. Si eso sucediera, nuestro Office revisará toda la entrada de la comunidad que hemos recibido sobre el propósito en advance de esa audiencia, junto con cualquier información nueva que pueda estar disponible. Gracias.
Ricardo, solo para clarificar, nuestra anticipación es no escuchar esto de nuevo. Estamos anticipando hacer una decisión hoy y, y, y solo tomando adelante, moviéndolo de esa manera. Tenemos, como sabes, un número limitado de miembros del board y demasiados casos en la cola.
Madam presidenta, ¿puedo preguntarle algo?
No voy a escuchar a nadie. Tengo el asunto. Y así que no anticiparemos escuchar este caso de nuevo, solo que no anticipamos escuchar casos una vez que los hemos dispuesto. Así que déjame ir y ver si hay...
¿Puedo preguntar sobre la naturaleza del...?
Madam presidenta.
Sr. Hanley, ¿alguien más quiere hablar en apoyo o en oposición al proyecto, que son miembros electos? Okay, ¿puedo escuchar a Aaron Tascher?
Madam presidenta. Madam presidenta. El secretario aquí.
Oh, perdón, Mark.
Lo siento, Madam presidenta. Solo quería asegurarme de que lo tenemos en la nota. Tenemos 115 más 34, 149 cartas de apoyo y tenemos 19 cartas de oposición y también tenemos una página de 56 firmadores en oposición también.
Okay, gracias. Déjame ver, Aaron Taschner, me envió un mensaje diciéndome que estás en un parque y que estás aquí para hablar en apoyo del proyecto. Por favor, coloque su nombre en la nota.
Buenas tardes, Madam presidenta y el board. Mi nombre es Erin Taschner y soy directora de parque y dueña de un condo en 310 Bremen, unidad número tres. Y debo admitir, inicialmente cuando vinieron a nosotros con el alcance del proyecto, me alarmé, me alarmé, era grande, era alto, tomó mucho espacio. Sin embargo, han trabajado con nosotros en la comunidad, todos en nuestro edificio unitario, han trabajado con nosotros y han oído nuestras apoyos, han bajado la altura y también han trabajado con nosotros en otros problemas que tenemos. Fullmente apoyo este proyecto y espero que, que puedas verlo como un gemelo que East Boston puede y será. Y además, mi nombre y otras personas que poseen unidades en 310 Bremen, todos nuestros nombres fueron falsificados en una petición en la que se dijo que estábamos en contra de este proyecto, no estamos en contra, estamos por este proyecto. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Puedo escuchar a, veamos, William Humphrey?
Madam presidenta, no creo que esté aquí más.
¿Y Dave Showman?
David, ¿estás mudo? David. Madam presidenta, estaba teniendo algunos problemas, creo, con su...
Okay.
Su cosa, pero estaba en total apoyo.
Okay, sí, nos envió un mensaje. ¿Y Maddie Emond? Tal vez Matthew Emond.
Matthew Pollak.
Matthew Pollak, okay.
Matthew Emond tomó su mano baja.
Okay, así que es Matthew Pollak.
Hola, ¿me escuchas?
Sí.
Hola, sí, soy Matthew Pollak, residente de East Boston en 256 Marginal Street y soy el director de Harbor Arts, una iniciativa de arte público en la ciudad. Madam presidenta y miembros del board, estoy aquí en apoyo al proyecto. Creo que las amenizas de un hámster y galerías de arte, así como los unidades de artistas accesibles, es algo que East Boston podría beneficiarse mucho. Apoyo pendiente a un compromiso de transición a, un compromiso con la comunidad para permitir acceso a grupos de jóvenes en East Boston y miembros del neighborhood de Eagle Hill con membresía o algo similar, para tener acceso al hámster. Creo que el hámster, sin proporcionar un instrumento educativo para la comunidad fuera del edificio, no tiene tanto beneficio para la ciudad, pero simplemente permitir acceso y crear programas educativos para los jóvenes de East Boston para tener acceso a algo como un hámster, creo que es algo que no hemos...
Gracias, gracias. ¿Y Brandon Gaddy todavía está en?
David me envió un mensaje, perdón, me envió un mensaje y dijo que está en el teléfono.
Okay, veamos a Mr. Gaddy, ¿está en? Okay, veamos, Minor Perez, ¿estás en?
Tengo a Minor, no sé si es Minor, creo que es él ahora.
Sí.
Estás mudo.
Madam presidenta, miembros del board, Minor Perez, representando cientos de carpinteros de la ciudad de Boston quieren poner en record en apoyo al proyecto.
Okay, ahora me gustaría escuchar a Raúl De Verge del PPDA. Por favor, coloque su nombre y dirección en la nota y sé que pasó por un proceso de artificio 80, por favor, habla con nosotros sobre ello.
Madam presidenta, este es Jeff Hampton.
Sí, adelante, Jeff.
Seré hablando a cargo del PPDA esta tarde. Nuestra comprensión para esta reconsideración no fue para que el board cambie su voto hoy. Sin embargo, fue hecho y apoyamos la reconsideración para una nueva audiencia debido a lo que creemos fue un audiencia inadecuada porque no fui capaz de estar en la audiencia para testificar y debido a otras discrepancias, déjame usar ese término, que fue presentado al board. El PPDA, así como otros departamentos de la ciudad, están en apoyo de la reconsideración para una audiencia. Sé que esto es muy, muy raro y a lo que puedo recordar, nunca ha pasado antes, pero creo que hay circunstancias extenuadoras que ocurrieron en esta audiencia que garantiza una reconsideración para una nueva audiencia pública.
Okay, así que para el hecho, así que en cuanto al proceso, hemos escuchado todo desde el polvo hasta la nata hoy. ¿Qué es nuevo que sería presentado en una audiencia? Hemos oído de funcionarios electos, hemos oído de todos los que podrían tener una voz. Así que en cuanto a...
Nuestra comprensión fue que este fue una reconsideración para una nueva audiencia, no para un cambio en el voto, lo cual es por qué no volveríamos y decir qué ha cambiado. Porque entiendo igual que todos los demás que participan en estas reuniones cada semana o cada semana, qué tiene que pasar para que el proyecto propuesto sea reconsiderado, qué en realidad ha cambiado.
Y el hecho de que hemos recibido demasiados cartas a nosotros donde todo el mundo asume, y todo el mundo asumió en sus cartas que necesitaban expresar su apoyo para el proyecto en lugar de para la reconsideración. Así que solo me gustaría decir que, así que para todos los intereses y propósitos, hemos ido adelante y he oído todas las cuestiones en relación a esto y así que necesito que se ponga un motion en marcha.
Madam presidenta, solo...
Sr. Hanley, ¿tenía algo que decir?
Sí, señor, y no sé, sé que tuviste a un miembro de la comunidad que quería hablar también, pero muy rápidamente, lo que ha cambiado es que ahora has oído apoyo que no pudo hablar en la audiencia de julio 21 y, francamente, fue suprimido y falsificado por un documento que fue, ya sabes, proporcionado como parte de ese registro de audiencia que ni el board ni el candidato ni siquiera tuvieron la oportunidad de revisar. Y eso es una enorme injusticia para el proceso de la ciudad y un precedente realmente malo. Lo que pedimos en nuestra carta no fue para que usted tome otro voto, sino solo para tener la oportunidad, como muchos otros lo han tenido, de una negación sin prejuicio para que podamos continuar trabajando en estas cuestiones, de las cuales ya tenemos. Y la rentabilidad fue una de las grandes cuestiones. Esta es una área que tiene un iPod en place ahora mismo y tienes un proyecto que fue aprobado por el PPDA en Suffolk Downs en gran parte basado en un componente de rentabilidad más robusto. Así que absolutamente es un problema y ha sido un problema en nuestras discusiones a lo largo. Y así que todo lo que estamos pidiendo es la misma oportunidad que se ha otorgado a otros que no han experimentado la misma injusticia que la ciudad y el board y el desarrollador tienen.
Honestamente, ya sabes, no continúo a oír estas palabras de ti porque has estado en el board muchas veces y, perdón, solo necesito... Y creo que te dieron tiempo de procesamiento. Totalmente entiendo las cuestiones con el sonido, etcétera. Por eso tuvimos una audiencia completa hoy. Así que hay...
Y ustedes del PPDA...
Quiero, ¿puedes mudo, Sr. Hanley, por favor? Quiero ser claro que hemos dado a este proyecto mucho tiempo, mucho consideración además del tiempo que hemos pasado en la última reunión y cerca de 45 minutos, he perdido el tiempo en este proyecto, que no escucharé nada de Sr. Hanley sobre este proyecto siendo sacrificado de ninguna manera. Oímos muy claramente del Office de la Ciudad de Boston que no cumple con la necesidad de la comunidad. Densidad, escala, tamaño de unidad, el impacto del tráfico, no acoge las necesidades de la comunidad. Todas las cuestiones de uso de la tierra muy importantes y cuestiones importantes de impacto. Así que estas están en la nota, ya sabes, y, y así que solo quiero asegurarme de que estamos todos claros que hemos pasado por esto desde el polvo hasta la nata y cada proyecto se encuentra en sus propias piernas. Y como los presidentes anteriores han dicho, no hay precedentes. Todo el mundo quiere darnos, darnos ayuda de alguna manera, pero solo voy a decir eso. Así que hemos, hemos oído este caso, hemos pasado mucho tiempo en esto. ¿Puedo tener un motion, por favor?
haré un motion y negaré la reconsideración.
Gracias. ¿Puedo tener un segundo?
Cárdeno.
¿Todos en favor?
Sí.
¿Alguien oposito?
Oposito.
Un motion no lleva...
Estoy oposito también, Madam presidenta.
Así que hay dos oposiciones, así que el motion no lleva, así que entonces ha sido aprobado.
Así que esto significa que sigue en la agenda...
Sí, tenemos que perder, tenemos que pasar más tiempo escuchando las mismas cosas que hemos oído nuevamente. Así que en ese punto, creo que esto es el fin de nuestra agenda.
Madam presidenta, si pudiera, me gustaría ir en la nota como queriendo reconsideración, así que estaba oposito al motion.
Así que usted también estaba oposito al motion, así que entonces fue, okay. Así que había tres personas que no querían escuchar reconsideración y cuatro personas que sí. Así que a pesar de los comentarios del Office de la Ciudad del Mayor y todos los demás, okay. Así que ha sido aprobado para reconsideración en algún momento. Creo que para el candidato, tienes mucho trabajo que hacer y así que este es el fin de la reunión. La reunión ahora está en marcha. Gracias.